Now's the time to call the meeting of the Bullock County Board of Commissioners to order. I would like to welcome the media and the visitors here. I would like to remind everyone to silence your cell phones and other media devices so that we can conduct this public business without interruption. Commissioner Timmy Russian will give the invocation and lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
If you will bow with me, please. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord God, thank you for all you do for us. Lord, I just ask a blessing on all the ones that's got flooded roads and problems with their houses and all. I'd like to ask you to take care of all the people that's traveling back and forth. We've had hurricanes and wind and water and got a lot of people in North Carolina and a lot of people from here traveling back and forth. Please keep them safe on their journeys and tasks. Please be with all the public servants and the ones that's out in the weather tonight and just, there's a lot of water across the roads. Please watch over all that. Please bless this country, this county, and this state. Please lead and guide this commission to help us make the best decisions we can for this county and its citizens. These things I ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mistress Mincy White will now call the roll.
I, Venus Mincy White, President and Clerk of the Board of Commissioners of Bullock County, hereby call the roll for those on the governing body. Chairman Roy Thompson, Vice Chairman Ray Davis, Commissioner Ray Mosley,
Aye.
Commissioner Anthony Simmons,
Aye.
Commissioner Jappy Stringer,
Aye.
Commissioner Timmy Russian,
Aye.
And Commissioner Toby Connor.
Aye.
I've determined that we have six members of the Board of Commissioners present. Therefore, we have a quorum to conduct business for the good of the citizens of Bullock County. I now yield the floor back to the Vice Chairman.
At this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Tom Couch, our County Manager, for presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Commissioners and those of you in the audience. We have a series of presentations on the agenda, actually presentations and recognitions. But first, I would like to call the Vice Chair of the Hospital Authority of Bullock County, Ms. Patricia Hunter, if she would be willing to come up and give her presentation on the Hospital Authority's tax relief check. And Ms. Hunter, maybe when you're done, if you'd accommodate the Commissioners, I'll ask the Commissioners to come down for the remaining presentations and recognition and see if Mr. Kennedy will accommodate us with a photo, if that's okay with you.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm glad to be here tonight to represent the Hospital Authority. I have with me in the back Paula Mooney, who's our Treasurer, and Christie Moran, who's our Executive Administrative Assistant. We just always appreciate the opportunity to come before this body and to just remind you of the longstanding relationship that we've had. I feel like it's been a wonderful relationship and we're very proud of what we've been able to do. Just as a reminder, and I'm sure that you all remember this, but we just like to make sure that you're, just to kind of set the stage, you know, when the Hospital Authority, when the hospital was sold back in 2005, our authority came up with a joint operation agreement, an intergovernmental agreement in June of 1996. And we basically invested those proceeds. We provide tax relief for the citizens of Bullock County. And so eighty percent of the earnings on the money that we invested comes back to the county in the form of tax relief. Ten percent goes to various agencies in the community that provide non-hospital healthcare benefits. So we've been able to provide a substantial benefit to organizations like Consortium Services, the Georgia Southern Senior Companion Program. We provide money to Hearts and Hands Clinic, Homebound Services, Aggie City Area Hospice. So a number of places in the community where we reach out and provide additional resources for healthcare. And then the remaining ten percent, of course, we keep and use that to grow the corpus. I'm very proud to say that last week, we delivered a check to your Chairman in the amount of $1,701,000 to be used for tax relief. That's substantially more than we had projected. We've been very pleased at what we've been able to do with the investments that we have and the increase in interest rates have certainly impacted that. The grants that we will provide this year will be in excess of $212,000. So our committee will begin to meet and usually around the first of the year, we'll begin to award those. But just to give you an idea, since we were formed in, or since we began this journey in 1996, we have provided a total of $37,399,000 back to the county for tax relief. And we have provided a total of four million, almost $4,700,000 for health grants in our community. And I feel like that's just a tremendous impact on the community, a tremendous opportunity for the citizens, and just a benefit that's sometimes kind of quietly in the background. And we like to remind you of that. You have a bound document in front of you that provides a lot of that information. It also just provides a lot of information about the makeup of our board, our investment strategies, those types of things, just so that you have a, because we are considered a component unit of the, I don't know, we are a component unit of the county, are we? So we are an independent authority, but we do, are really kind of a supporting organization, so to speak, for your organization. And so we want you to have full knowledge of what we're doing and the makeup of our board. So I appreciate the opportunity to come and present that to you. And like I said, we're very proud of the money that we've been able to provide in the form of tax relief for the citizens.
Well, Ms. Hunter, we certainly do, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners I speak, we certainly do appreciate it. And Bullock County has been in a very unique position for well over a generation to have such idle funds available for tax relief. I don't know of any other county in Georgia that is similarly situated. And I think the stewardship of the Hospital Authority has been splendid and excellent. And if I may, I'd like to ask if they're so willing, Christie and Paula to come up for the snapshot, too. And I'll encourage the Commissioners to come from behind the dais and Dal can situate everybody the way he wants. And we'll take a picture and ask the Commissioners to remain below the dais.
We're going to get y'all to shift this way just a little bit, once everybody gets near. Y'all come this way just a little bit. We're going to try to work around that podium. Bear with me, you'll hear a few clicks.
Yeah, now we have three special recognitions. And I'm going to ask our Chief Financial Officer, Christie King, to come forward, please. Okay, we're proud to announce this evening that, once again, Bullock County has been chosen for the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. It's a certificate of achievement, and we've received this award for approaching a decade, I think. And we are only one of a dozen counties out of 159 in Georgia who both received this award and another associated award, which is for excellence in financial reporting. And this year, the budget award comes with a very special recognition for receiving the highest possible score documenting strategic goals and strategies. And as a point of personal privilege, I'll say that Christie, particularly with the budget, but always with financial reporting or the audit, does an outstanding job. Her leadership with the Finance Department is second to none. She helps us and helps our financial reporting and budgeting be transparent, have full disclosure. And now it's an icon for financial planning. And we appreciate your leadership and your effort so much, but I know it takes a team and you've got a team that helps you very, very much. So it's my honor to give you this certificate, and it really should be in your name, but it's on behalf of Bullock County, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
We get, right, y'all will split right there and we'll just let you get down the middle. Next, Venus Mincy White. I'm very proud to announce this individual recognition. Venus is now a certified clerk. She's received her certification from the Georgia Clerks Education Institute, which is an arm of the Carl Vinson Institute of Government at the University of Georgia. And she has gone through 101 hours, at least, of rigorous training, classroom lecture, homework. And it's really the equivalent of about eight to 10 credit hours, semester hours of college credit. And the clerk's position, it can differ from county to county. So they not only get instruction and training on meeting management, the care and feeding of Commissioners, and records management. Those are typically the core duties of a city or a county clerk, although it may differ from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, because in a lot of smaller jurisdictions, sometimes the clerk can be the manager or the administrator. And therefore, you have to have additional training on finance, payroll, human resources, and local government in general, right? So, you know, Venus, and this took you about two years, is that right?
A year and a half.
Year and a half, and you've been here two years, though, right? Well, you've been with-
And this month, be here, two years.
In your job, but you've been with the county for-
Seven.
Seven, formerly at the probate court, right?
Yes.
Yeah, their loss, our gain.
Right.
So-
Thank you.
But I think, I think in addition to this certificate adding to your knowledge base, it gives us greater bench strength in our management structure. And, you know, I think you have a degree in finance, too, right?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, so, you know, we were, you're just another example of very well-rounded and excellent people and leaders that we have here. And congratulations, and we're very, very proud of you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Ladies, if you two will each over that way just a little bit, right there, there you go. Contrary to popular belief, where sometimes it's been quoted that the county is mismanaged and we wastefully spend money, nothing is further from the truth. But I think, I think we owe the citizens of this county great gratitude for the Parks and Recreation Department that has a 75-year legacy. It started with Matt Slotwood. I had the privilege of knowing Matt Slotwood before I came here, when he lived in Douglas. And a great man, he taught a lot of kids, probably a few of you in the room here, how to swim. And so this 75-year legacy has rolled on and rolled on, and we've had, you know, just a series of great directors, many of whom are, who are in the GRPA Hall of Fame. And I think we'll get a few more HOFs before the deal is done. But what we wanted to do this evening is give special recognition because GRPA held its first district annual awards in October over in Effingham County. First, they gave some length of service awards, which they typically do, but these particular milestones are rather significant. Our new director, Dee Cosby, congratulations again, Dee, and to Tony Morgan, our new Assistant Director. But Dee and Cannon Pettigene both received a 20-year service award. And I think that counts as service not only to Statesboro and Bullock County, but it also counts as service to GRPA. And, but the big banana is, is that they've received a district award, an agency award, for being the best agency in the population category, 50,000 to 80,000. And they did it on the merit of their 75th anniversary. We've had some good field lighting improvements, I think, in Mill Creek and possibly in Brooklyn, unless I'm mistaken. The success of the Ag Arena and Splash continues to grow. But we've also hosted two GRPA tournaments, baseball and softball, I think. But we must never forget the service that's provided by after-school and summer camps, which is a way high bar above what we would call commercial daycare. Joy Deale does a great job of trying to co-educate with the school system and provide all of the children with meaningful opportunities to play, socialize, and learn. So is Dee, I know Tony's here, is Dee here? Come on, okay, come on. And I don't know if Cannon's here, if you've got anybody else you want to bring up.
No.
Okay. Yeah, you just want to hog the award, right?
Yes.
Have everything. It's a nice tie. If you wouldn't mind holding this, I think somebody can, you know, curl 16 ounces of wood. Well, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Couch. At this time, we have the approval of the general agenda. Before I entertain a motion to approve the general agenda, do I have any other discussion or modifications desired by the County Manager or any of the County Commissioner Board members?
Mr. Vice Chair, will you yield the floor to the County Manager, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Out of public necessity and for the good of the citizens of Bullock County and at the request of the County Attorney, Jeff Akins, we, or he, but we, are requesting a executive session to discuss potential litigation in real estate. And we would ask that the executive session be placed as category item number 11, number 10, is commission and staff comments, but it would be between commission and staff comments and adjournment officially, effectively making adjournment, item 12.
The floor is open for a motion on Mr. Couch's suggestion.
Move to approve the general agenda, Mr. Vice Chairman, with amendments by County Manager Tom Couch.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. I need to name each one of them. On the concern agenda, approve the minutes of Thursday, October the 10th, 2024. Approve the minutes from Tuesday, October the 15th, 2024. Approve the reappointment of Mildred Wilson and Linda Christie for four years to the Statesboro Bullock Land Authority, Land Bank Authority. Approve the reappointments of Commissioner Anthony Simmons, Commissioner Timmy Russian, and the appointment of Commissioner Toby Connor for two years to the Bullock County Public Facilities Authority. Grant a 2025 alcoholic beverage renewal license for packaged retail beer and wine sales to certain establishments with the current 2024 license. Approve a service repair request from Quality Concrete Finishing Incorporated for concrete work for the brick paver replacement project at Mill Creek in the amount of $87,420. Approve the purchase of Bullard Thermal Imaging Cameras from Profire and Technical in the amount of $30,966. Approve a bid from Brian T. Howell Enterprises Incorporated for longleaf pine straw in the amount of $23,270. Approve and ratify hauling service from Sand Creek Land Construction in the amount of $17,066.25. Approve a radio system hardware user agreement with Motorola Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $123,281.40. Approve a contract with Reus Construction Company for an apron rehabilitation project at the Bullock County, Statesboro-Bullock County Airport in the amount of $1,570,944.80. Approve a service agreement with FEMA, FEMA for security systems at Hill Streets in Statesboro in the amount of $9,910.40. We can approve all these items collectively, or we can move any item to new business for Do I have a motion at this time? Mr. Vice Chairman, I make a motion that we approve these collectively. We have a motion and a second. If there is no discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed.
Okay, Mr. Kemp, if you wouldn't mind, we asked you, and Chief Sykes here, I believe, this evening, to discuss the recent grant we received from either FEMA or GEMA, right?
Correct, GEMA.
Yeah, and, you know, even though it doesn't require any commission action because the grant requires no local match funding, we did want to expose the Commissioners to the purpose of it and the benefit of it. So please proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chair Davis, good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chair. Commissioners, Mr. Couch, Ms. Venus. I'm Corey Kemp, Director of Emergency Management. Early May, when I got here, I spoke with Chief Sykes, who's going to be here to answer questions shortly, about a Homeland Security Grant, also to work with GSAR, a grant to get rope equipment, special equipment needed for new operations that are coming to Bullock County. So part of the Homeland Security Grant, this core capabilities have five missions: to prevent, protect, mitigate, respond, and recover on disasters or future disasters. So with that, Chief Sykes wanted to get some specialized equipment for technical rescue situations, such as high-angle rope rescues, confined space rescues, and also structure collapse rescues. And this equipment is not our standard, or not their standard, equipment. It's all equipment for looking towards the future. And what I mean by future, it's to help serve the growing population alongside the Tier One plants that are, they are building on I-16. So with that, Chief Sykes picked out the equipment from a plan review process that they'd done a couple of months back, where they figured out they need this special equipment to help with some of their rescues. I'm not a fireman, I don't understand the rope and rescue, so that's why I brought Chief Sykes with me. Do you want to step up real quick?
Sure.
So the grant is worth $25,000. I just need permission to accept the grant. There is no match, but I'll let Chief Sykes explain how he will utilize that equipment.
Yeah, so this is a great opportunity for us, again, no cost to the citizens, so we're excited to-
No cost to the citizen, so we're excited to receive this grant. As you know, Bullock County, the dynamics is changing. We're growing, so we're having to, you know, meet the needs. And some of the industry that's coming in bringing some different challenges than what we faced in the past. So we're just trying to get ahead of that a little bit. And this funding allows us to do that without putting the burden on, you know, the budget and the taxes. So we're excited and look forward to it. And I think we're moving in a good direction. It's our first step. So anything, any questions you may have.
I'd like to make one clarification before the Vice Chairman asks for about any questions or discussion. I stand corrected. I forgot that we, that the Commission will have to take some action to accept the grant agreement and accept the funds from GEMA, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my bad. So, but yeah, that action will be required, but I yield the floor back to the Chairman and to consider further action or discussion. Now, what am I supposed to do? Just ask if there's any questions or discussion and then ask for a motion if there are any.
Is there any further questions or discussion, Mr. Kemp, Mr. Sykes? If there are none, we'll entertain a motion at this time.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Kemp.
Thank you.
At this time, would Mr. Fire Chief Ben Tarplick come forward?
Good afternoon, sir. Gentlemen, ma'am. Thank you for having me up here. It's good to see y'all. The reason I'm here is I have a predicament. I need to buy a tanker. We have it already budgeted. Tried a couple of times to get it. One time, the deal fell through because before I could get in front of y'all, it was sold. Second time, obviously, I was doing the same thing, got one picked out. And then the hurricane hit. We can't help that. So talking with Fay, talking with Ms. Krista King, they said, why don't I get in front of you and ask your permission? Once I find one under a certain amount, can I go ahead and make the, sign the form? And that way, we can say it's for Bullock County, and that way, we put our name on it. So I'm here in front of you, asking for permission to go ahead and enter into our contract. Once I find a suitable tanker/pumper to purchase, I'd go ahead and sign it. And then afterwards, after we get it in our name and get it purchased, I'll come back in and give you all the details. Right now, we're working with 10-8. It is a Sourcewell contract, so it's already cooperative, purchased, priced. So all that's already handled. So we're just asking permission to be able to enter into our contract. Allow me to enter into a contract and buy a tanker for the Fire Department.
And I think Chief, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Vice Chair, just to reiterate, you need this special authority for authorization and appropriations because of the market situation and the difficult, supply chain difficulties that remain in buying fire apparatus. Is that right?
That is correct, because right now, it's still a 24 to 36 month if we bought something custom ordered. Right now, they are producing some tankers, and they're coming off the line. So we're trying to get our name stamped on one of those. And depending on when the next one we can get, it'd either be the end of this year, calendar year, in the next month and a half, or it could be at the first of the year where we could go ahead and have a tanker year. So I'm asking expedite the process, and we appreciate the authority to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or any discussion that you need to ask Mr. Tarplick? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to allow the Fire Chief to move forward with a preapproval of $525,000 for the purchase of a new tanker pump.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Vice Chairman.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Tarplick.
Thank you.
At this time, would County Engineer Brad Deal please come forward?
Good evening. I'm Brad Deal, County Engineer. This item ties in pretty closely to the last one that was on the agenda. So as you all are probably aware, the fire station in Register is being expanded to accommodate additional personnel, I think, including EMS. And actually, I might just let Chief Tapley just very briefly explain that project and what's going on. And then I'll get into the details of what is in this agenda item exactly.
All right, Ben Tapley, Fire Chief. Yes, we have been expanding. Feels like a year or two that we've been in the process, but we actually moved into the new part of the expansion. We have some room. We have enough rooms for the firefighters and the EMTs and paramedics there. So now, we have 24-hour ambulance service in the Register area, started on November 1st. So that's a huge deal. So with that comes a need for a suitable parking lot. Right now, we're parking on the grass, and we just added a new septic tank system and drain field, which is off to the side. What we're asking Brad to do is contract with somebody so that we can actually build out our parking lot, available to pull the, you know, especially with all the rain we've been having lately, pull the rain and have it go in the appropriate places. So we just want to try to get that started, if we can, because we're getting close. We've got some renovations going on in the existing. Now they moved from the new part to the existing, and now they're demoing that and going to build that back. So, you know, we'd like to, in the morning times, we're going to have a place for 10 people. Well, 12 people, because our battalion chief just moved down there. So we have three firefighters, two paramedics or EMTs, and then a battalion chief. So that's a lot of cars in the middle or in the morning when we report to work. So just trying to get some parking spaces there.
And Chief, well, Brad can probably explain the engineering part. Go ahead and do that first, and I just had one comment or question.
Yes, sir. So as Ben said, the Register Fire Station is surrounded, well, I don't know if you mentioned this or not, but it's surrounded by some residential properties on pretty much every side. So we're going to design the drainage so that it doesn't adversely affect the properties around it. And so the contract with EMC Engineering that we have proposed tonight would include surveying, finding all the property lines, corners, doing some geotechnical work to check the soils. When we did the parking lot and portal for that fire station, we encountered a lot of bad material. So we're going to go ahead and upfront, just check the soil around it so we don't have any change order, try to reduce any change orders with the contractor once we get it under contract. So this work just includes preparing all the design plans and everything for the work. And then we would get into the construction bidding at a later time. And the way we would be funding this work would be with T-Splash funds that we had available. And Mr. Cow, did you have any other questions on that?
But just to reassure the board, I think I was advised we've got concurrence with finance and special projects to go forth with this and eventual construction, right?
That's right. And I think I failed to mention that this doesn't include the cost of the construction. That'll have, we'll have to get bids, and we'll have that at a later time. When we built the portal parking lot, it actually cost us around, it was about $110,000. And this is probably going to cost more than that due to the size and working the drainage around it. So, I mean, that would be my estimate. But if you have any questions, though, I want to just let me know.
Do any of the Commissioners have any questions for Mr. Deal and Mr. Tarplick? If there are none, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve a contract with EMC Engineering Services Incorporated in the amount of $32,500 to perform surveying and engineering design services for the Register Fire and EMS parking lot and site to be funded by T-Splash.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any discussion? If none, in favor signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Deal and Mr. Tarplick. Mr. Deal, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. So this contract, this agenda item is to repair some drainage structures on, it's in five different locations on county roads. Some of the damage was done by Tropical Storm Debbie, but then some of the damage was done by trucks and vehicular traffic hitting some drainage structures. So we have five different locations. We got quotes on this work, and it was not something that was originally in the budget because it was not planned. But we decided to try to bundle all of this work together and try to get better prices on it, which I think we did, instead of trying to treat each one as a separate project in itself. But we were going to use some T-Splash funds available for repairing roads to fund this work. And I think there's a typo on the agenda. The amount is $39,900. I think there's an extra digit or something on the agenda that I see. So, but it's $39,900. And just let me know if you have any questions on it.
Do any of the Commissioners have any questions for Mr. Deal? If there are none, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve a contract with Tim Lanier Construction, LLLC, for drainage structure repair on various county roads in the amount of $39,900?
That's right. Yes, sir.
To be furnished by the T-Splash.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept this contract with Tim Lanier Construction.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion at this time by the Commissioners? If none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
Opposed, same.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passed. At this time, I need a motion to approve the zoning agenda.
So moved, Mr. Vice Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If none, all in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Item number one, Five B Holdings, LLLC, has submitted an application to rezone approximately four acres from R-25 residential, 25,000 square feet, to R-2, two-family residential, 15,000 square feet for the purpose of building seven two-family dwellings. This property is located on 701 Pat's Lane. Mr. Pope.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. All right, this, item number one, again, is a rezone request. This board has, you may recall, has seen this before. I believe it was decided in January of this year. But there has been some changes in the, in the, I guess, the situation of the property. Commissioner Connor, I believe, at that time, there was some discussion with the roads in Pat's Lane. And so those roads are on the list, and I believe under contract to be resurfaced. But I did want to go ahead and bring that out because it came up in planning and zoning. But this parcel currently is a total of 6.12 acres. However, the overall request is for a four-acre rezone to an R-2. This is just the general location. It's west of Statesboro, or east of Statesboro, I'm sorry. And generally located not far from the bypass off of Highway 24. You'll see, north of Highway 24 through the neighborhood. This is the current zoning map for the property. And Pat's Lane is a county road, county paved road. It was, this site was originally planned for development. And three of the, there are actually duplex structures, made it to development. And the remaining land was not. And when zoning came in, that's when, again, this, the R-25 zoning was placed on the property. Again, aerial of the property here, there has, well, this is the site plan for, as proposed by the applicant. As, I believe, there's no change from the previous time you heard it. Same number of units, which would be 14 units, seven total structures. And then these are photos of the property when we placed, placed a sign. So I'll go back to the site plan. And staff recommends approval. And Planning and Zoning Commission recommended a denial by four to zero vote. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Chris Gohegan.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the Commission, Mr. Pope. I want to thank the staff for their work on this report and for that introduction of this project. I'm Chris Gohegan, Talby Rushing Law Firm. Pleased to be here tonight on behalf of Five B Holdings and its member, Rob Bowen, who is also in the audience tonight. As Mr. Pope explained, we're here to seek approval for a rezone of four acres from R-25 to R-2. This is four acres of an original source tract that contains 6.2 acres. The first three duplexes that you see on that site plan were constructed back in 1990, which is when this plat was originally prepared. It has been the plan for going on 35 years to develop Pat's Lane with these seven additional duplexes. And we're here tonight to seek your approval to move that project forward. These duplexes will be two and three-bedroom units. After the seven are constructed, that'll make 10 units on Pat's Lane. It's directly across the street, directly across Sweetheart Lane from the Sweetheart Lane community, which includes about 40 duplexes, also zoned R-2. So it's consistent with the neighborhood. It is consistent with adjoining properties, and it completes a plan that's been in place for over 30 years. My client, Five B Holdings, purchased this property in May of this year. Again, staff reviewed it, recommended approval. The future land use plan designates this area suburban corridor. Mixed uses are permitted in the Mixed uses are permitted in the suburban corridor, including R-2. R-2 designations are for one-to-two-story residences with landscaping on all sides and a moderate degree of separation. It's exactly the project we hope to build on this site. This project did come before you at the end of last year and was decided on, I think, at the beginning of this year. A key difference from that original application and this one, that was for R-3. This is an R-2 designation, specifically two-family residences, which is of the character of the properties across the street, which, again, include roughly 40 units of similar design. This matter was deferred by Planning and Zoning, so we attended two hearings at the Planning and Zoning Commission to talk about this matter. I think the primary reason for deferral was there was a number of concerns expressed by other property owners and residents of this area. If I were to boil those concerns down, I think there were three primary concerns. One was the condition of the roadways in this area. A second was the condition of the water system for the community. And the third was a general lack of infrastructure and some concerns with litter. All legitimate concerns for members of any community and all concerns that are shared by my client who wants a nice, marketable product in this location. I think the common theme among those concerns, from our perspective, is that none of those issues are the responsibility of 5B Holdings. All of its lots are undeveloped. It has not been out there using the roads or putting litter in the community, and it will not intend to. But also, these are not issues that are within my client's authority to fix. My client doesn't control the condition of the roadways. He doesn't control the water system, which is owned by Tucker Utilities and managed by MSO, and he's, he has no control over the infrastructure. Nevertheless, we wanted to explore those concerns. Again, they'll be shared by my client as they develop this project. And as Mr. Pope indicated, as to the condition of the roadways, there is an active contract on this project. I think Mr. Deal told Planning and Zoning Commission this project already would have been resurfaced if not for all the weather events that we've had. So, I hope the community can feel confident and secure that they're going to get a better roadway here very soon if that work isn't already underway. As to the water system, I did reach out to MSO to get some details about the water system and learned that there are two wells for this water system. There's a 5,000 gallon tank and a 1,000 gallon tank for 6,000 total gallons of capacity. The system is fully permitted. It has no problems. The water lines have been in place for years, and, in fact, the tap fees for these lots have been already paid for many, many years. It was asked at Planning and Zoning whether there was a backup generator for this water system. We learned during Helene, as did many residents, that this water system does not have a backup generator. However, my client has committed to purchase a generator to provide to MSO to dedicate to this pump house. We don't want a water system interruption any more than anybody else in the community. So, we're happy to incur that expense to try and make this project an additive component for this community, not to take away. We hope you'll look favorably on our application. I'll reserve the rest of my time to respond to any comments you hear in opposition.
Hello, I'm George Jenkins, and I live at 608 Sweetheart Lane. And when you see the picture up here, you see Pat's Lane. Pat's Lane is the last road on Sweetheart Lane. Sweetheart Lane leaves Highway 24 at Mill Creek Park, where the light is at Mill Creek Park, 24. And, and then Billy Michael takes over there. Billy Michael goes down about three tenths of a mile, and then from there on in, it's Sweetheart Lane. And that's Sweetheart Lane coming across, and that's Pat's Lane there. The, the reason, I'm here to, I, I do not want more duplexes put here. The reason I do not is we, we have seen in the past, we have 14 private-owned homes on this road. And then there've been some rentals, single rentals and duplexes put on there. Oftentimes, when you hear numbers thrown out, about 40-some-odd duplexes already there, they're not, they do not have access to Billy Michael Road. Or they only have, there's a dirt road on the backside that has some duplexes on it, but they are not part of what we're talking about here. The reason we're concerned is that the, there's, there's no responsibility on temporary housed people moving in and, and living temporarily, living for a short term, in a rental property. And since they don't have any ownership, we see an increase, every time there's some more added, we can see an increase in trash alongside the road. And that, that's what I object to. We, we, they have done a tremendous amount of work on paving the road in the last week or so. And the road looks really nice. And, and we can, we appreciate those improvements because we like to keep our neighborhoods looking nice. The, we would appreciate it if they put the speed breakers back in because, but a nice road, you'll see people now increasing their speed coming by, and on a little small road like that with kids, it's tough. But roadside litter is a main reason I'm contesting this. And like I said, mostly coming from non-owner groups that are, that are in the area. But our current situation is, as I, as I said earlier, we had fourteen, we have 14 private homes on this, on this roadway. And, but those are occupied by their owners. And then we have 36 families renting in both single and duplex dwellings. And these seven duplex units that we're talking about adding here actually add 14 family units. And the 14 additional represents a 39% increase in rental property along that roadway. And that 39% increase is what we are concerned about because the litter has been almost uncontrollable. The people that own property are constantly out there cleaning up. But now we're adding more to it. And so, with 30, 39% increase in rental properties, that is our concern, and that's what we object into. Along with the problems with the litter, and these, this 39% increase will also come extra vehicles for every one of those houses. And if you can imagine a traffic problem with 39% increase in, in your rental stuff, that's, that's definitely going to be probably more than 39% increase in traffic coming and going. And we, we just, I hate to sound negative, but at the same time, I'd like to have some, someone that would take some control or responsibility for the mess that comes from that. And on this Pat's Lane right now, if you drive down that road, you see the very end of the cul-de-sac looks like a dump because people are dumping trash down there. And I assure you, they're not the homeowners that live further down the road. They're not going back there to dump it. And this is only like six tenths of a mile from the place where we, from our current dump station on 24. So, I'd appreciate it if you would consider these, and I, and I ask you to please reject this proposal. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, how you doing? My name is Dion Hendricks, 611 Sweetheart Lane. I came last time, and like the lawyer said, when he, when he came in and everything, he said that it's been there for 30 years. Why didn't they build it? I can tell you why. It was a dirt road. You couldn't even drive down it. Every time you tried to drive, it had to get a triter to pull you out. Nobody could, nobody could build, so guess what? When they put their money and they invested into it, it failed. So, nobody wanted to move down there. So, they say, hey, we just going to stop. When they rezone it, if they care so much, why are they not coming the way we are? Why didn't they come, why didn't I, why did they not fight to keep it where they can build? They didn't care. You know why? Because it was undeveloped. I'm not here about, yeah, the litter bothered me, the water and all this stuff here. He forgot to mention, it was about an agreement between the county and us, the homeowners. The county said, if we give up our land, they will put a road there. It would not be a good road. It would be a decent road, but they would not be doing all that building up and down the road. So, I gave up my land. George, y'all gave up y'all land? Yeah, we gave up our land to the county to maintain it. But guess what? In 30 years, the county never did anything. There go our county worker right there with his triter. He cut, he cut everything that the county was supposed to do. He did it himself for 30 years. Now, we got, Debbie came through, Helene came through. All these roads are in just, the county is just tore apart. But they pushed everybody out the way to build us a road so that they can come here today. They wanted to get it done before, before today because they wanted to be able to stand in front of y'all today and say, hey, the road is built. We done our part now, so go ahead and let us build up there. No, it's not right. It's not right at all. And I can just tell you that I'm just so disappointed because I feel like the deal was already done. Y'all took something away from us that we can't get back, and y'all took time because we've been coming here for a year, for a year and a half, going and talking about this here. And we felt like we was really getting somewhere. But the thing about it is, I feel like it's already decided because before they even, we even came the last time, they was already doing work. They was already down there working, cutting the trees and clearing out the land and everything before we even came before the county commissioner. And I felt like it was already done. And I'm just disappointed because we made that deal with the county, and the county just, and I feel like the county just let us down. And I just, I hate it because all these people here, I hope they're not wasting their time coming in here thinking that they got a voice when it's already decided. I'm just disappointed, and I hope y'all do right because do not make a deal with this, with the citizens of Bullock County and then turn around and slap us in the face.
Tim Powell. Lance Hodges. About 12 seconds on the clock.
Hope it just won't take too long.
Mr. Hodges, you have 12 seconds. Please be brief, and I'm going to give you another minute. You got a minute and 12 seconds.
I can read fast. My name is Lance Hodges. Me and my wife, Donna, have been living at Sweetheart Lane for 34 years. We built our house on five acres. I'm opposing the multifamily unit because I know it brings more people and more traffic on our road and neighborhood, but we don't need that. The traffic is already bad enough. I'm also worried about the value of my home if these units are built. I don't see why something can't be done about Billy Michael Road, which is a dirt road. That part is a dirt road. There's two ways to get to Sweetheart Lane from Billy Michael Road. One is a paved road. The other is a dirt road, which circles around. If something could be done about that road, that would cut down on traffic. We just need to come to some kind of agreement that we both can agree on, like, instead of building apartments, why not build homes and fix, and fix that dirt road where we got more, where we can get rid of more of the traffic? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Gohegan, you have five minutes. End of rebuttal. Would you like to bring forth?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Appreciate the concerns voiced by the members of this community. Several of them have repeatedly made an effort to attend these meetings to make their concerns known, and they're valid concerns. The condition of our roadways, traffic, litter, these are concerns that are borne by all of us as a community. They are not concerns, in our opinion, that are specific to the development of this 4.2 acres into seven duplexes. But they are concerns that this commission has to consider, and this commission has a challenging job of balancing the public health, safety, and welfare against the right of landowners to do reasonably with their properties as they choose. And if a property owner, I will tell you, there has been no work on these sites as far as infrastructure or site work to develop this, this property. But if, if the owners of the property want to get out and clean up their site, remove trees, that's certainly within their ability. This site could be developed as single-family residences right now. If they wanted to go out and start pouring pads for single-family residences, they can certainly do that. That's not the plan. That's not the highest and best use of this property. What you see on this plat, we submit, is the highest and best use of this property. It's why the property was acquired by my client in May of last year. So, in terms of previous failures or a lack of desire to develop this property, that certainly can't be attributed to my client, who's a new owner. These are not apartments. These are duplexes, and that's probably a fine distinction, but I want to make sure that is clear. These are stick-built units. They just happen to have two-family units within, under one roof. Again, we, we submit that this has been the plan for development of Pat's Lane for 30 years. We're just here to seek to finish it off. This is a suitable project for the site. It complements the character of the community, not to diminish the concerns of the neighbors. But again, we hope that this project will add to this community, not take away from it. We thank you for your consideration.
Would the people that came to oppose this rezone, that live in that neighborhood, please stand? Thank you. Would the people that came to support this rezone, that came to this meeting, please stand? Thank you. At this time, we would entertain any discussion or questions by any of the county commissioners If there are none, we would, the chair would entertain a motion at this time. Being no motion, the rezone would fail.
Mr. Vice Chair, there needs to be a decision one way or the other. I mean, I looked at the zoning ordinance last night after that issue we had, and the board is required to make a decision. They can defer it for up to 45 days, but they have to make a decision. Yeah.
So, we entertain a motion for?
Somebody's to, to approve or to deny. Yeah, somebody's going to have to make a motion.
All right, the chair would need a motion to approve or deny. Mr. Vice Chair, I'll make a motion to deny.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If none, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand, signify. If none, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand, signify. Oppose, same sign. This rezon is denied. If, if anyone would like to leave at this time, before we get into the second rezon, you may do so. All right, item number two. Jason Williams has submitted an application to rezon approximately 20.83 acres from R40 residential 40,000 square feet to R3 residential 15,000 square feet. For the purpose of creating a multifamily housing development. This property is located or at near 16287 Georgia Highway 67. Mr. Pope.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. This parcel involved in the rezon request, it's a parcel of 95 acres roughly, but the total rezon amount would be 20.83 acres. An R3 zoning would allow for the townhome-style development of which they're proposing, which is by our ordinance considered multifamily, in the multifamily zoning. The location of the property is shown just to the south of Statesboro along Highway 67. And as shown by the zoning map, this property, again, the 20 acres is on the western, the western portion of Highway 67. So, it does, the boundaries are Elmer Phillips Road and Carrington Drive. As you can see, the, the area zoning across Highway 67 and beyond that is primarily ag five properties. As you get closer to Statesboro, north on 67, you have a little higher density development with, with R3 and a planned unit development, which is nearing its expiration date from approval. But, that contemplates townhomes as well. And then Carrington South subdivision is across Elmer Phillips and accesses the same county-maintained Carrington Drive. This is the site plan that was originally proposed. And there was, at planning and zoning, some discussion and I think maybe some conditions that were considered for this site plan. However, the site plan was revised in which it shows access onto Georgia Highway 67. Basically, the same layout, same density. There is an active variance request for access onto Carrington Drive, which Planning and Zoning will hear that, Planning and Zoning Commission will hear that next week. So, but as, as it's being proposed currently, and without that variance, the only access would be onto Highway 67. So, that is the site plan as proposed. And, you know, just for reference, this is Carrington Drive. I'll go back to the site plan. Staff recommends a number of conditions if approval is granted. And then Planning and Zoning Commission recommended a denial by three to one vote. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Steve Rushing, who's representing the applicant tonight.
Mr. Vice Chairman, if I would be in order, and before we start the hearing and, and the clock on this, I would like to address maybe some comments that were made during the public comment section of the meeting last night. I would take no more than about two minutes. Thanks, sir. During the public comments, I think there was reference perhaps to the application for this matter that's about to come before us regarding the political campaign contributions report. As part of that application, the application was made by Jason Williams and myself as named his agent. And, and our personal names, and I had interpreted the statute that if we had made no contributions, that we did not have to make a report, and neither of us had. And so, that matter was left blank. After the comments last night, I gave a closer review of the statute on this. And perhaps it now appears that we should have included contributions made by companies in which we may have an ownership interest, like my law firm or his real estate company, both of which did make campaign contributions during the primary and also the general election. But, we state that those contributions are made to support the political process and to support candidates, both during the primary and the general election. There was no intent to influence any particular item that may be coming before this commission, including the one to follow. But, it was a good faith oversight on my part. We have since, this afternoon, tendered that supplemental report with those contributions that were made by those respective companies. I'll go on to say that all of those contributions were reported by the candidates, so there was no intent to, to not report that. But, I do think it's important that, looking at that, the ordinance or the statute, it is clear that political contributions is part of the campaign process, it's part of the political process, and it is not the basis of a recusal by any commissioner that receives campaign contributions from any citizens, including my law firm, or Jason, or his business, or anyone else who, who does so, and we encourage it.
Steve, can I add too? I mean, I agree it's no basis for recusal, but I want to make it clear too, that the commissioners are not responsible for making any disclosures. That's, that's on the applicant and the, and opponents.
That's correct. That was on me, and I own that. And anyone that speaks on a project does have to make the similar reporting, but we have since done that, albeit late. But, it was due to my very strict reading of the statute. And with that, I'm prepared to make our presentation.
Mr. Rushing, thank you for that admission.
Yes, sir. All right, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I am Steve Rushing with Toby Rushing, Snipes, Martian Hodgen. I'm representing the applicant, Jason Williams, who is present here with us tonight, along with his beautiful family on the second row there. Also with us is our engineer, Mr. Hayden Rollins of Hussy Gay Bell. He is our designer of this project, on this 20.83 acre parcel. Jason is proposing to develop this property for multifamily, as you see there, in the form of townhomes that he intends to keep and maintain himself. But, there could be eventual sale of those items, but that is not his current intent. This subject property, as stated, is located just past the fairgrounds, and as you notice, it is on State Highway 67, but a but, a road on all sides. We had initially, after our, our pre-meeting, shown accesses to Carrington South Drive. At the, the first commission hearing, it was determined, I think by staff, that there is a requirement of an R3 or multifamily project to open onto an arterial or collector road. And I think they said that Carrington South is a local street, so that's why we had to redesign onto Highway 67. However, obviously, it being a state road, that will require GDOT approval, and we've made some preliminary contact with them. They've not given us a lot of confidence, so that's the purpose of the variances that was referred to by Mr. Pope. As you see, it would be a potential of 190 residential units if all goes well, as pursuant to our plans. We, of course, deleted any access to Elmer Phillips Road, also I want to make that a point. There were some concerns raised about the citizens in there in Carrington South. First of all, about the road of Carrington. I think that's been addressed perhaps with the, the new plan. But, we also remind you that there is a significant new buffer ordinance that requires a landscape engineered buffer to include shrubs and trees. Now, this will be in addition to the buffer that appears on the Carrington South side already, on the other side of Elmer Phillips Road, and of course, Elmer Phillips Road itself separates the two properties. We assert that this is one reason that the staff determined that there was no evidence that this proposed change in use would injure or detract from existing parcels. Now, if GDOT does approve our road access plan, then there would be less intervention on Carrington Drive with Carrington South residents who access their development through that way. But, even if one or all of our accesses are not permitted by GDOT, there would only be up to two accesses to Carrington South Drive from this property. And those citizens, or those persons already on Carrington South coming from Carrington South subdivision certainly would have the right of way, so we, we don't envision there would be a traffic issue no more than normally expected either. Now, the county staff did a good job in addressing the standards of review in this report, where they determined that the property is suitable for the proposed use. And if the application was granted, they proposed eight conditions. Now, since our site plan deleted the access to Elmer Phillips Road, I don't note that six applies, but the way it was reworded, we have no problem with even condition number six. You'll also remember that this tract is designated in the county's future land use plan as suburban neighborhood character area, which does anticipate an R3 zoning classification. It's compatible, because there's already, you can see at this, the bottom right corner of that map, that there's already an R3 zoned property just across Highway 67 that also accesses 67. Now, we are attempting to balance the high cost of the land and infrastructure that goes with this and to being compatible with the neighborhood. And we believe these engineered buffers and all the other protective measures that is in the county ordinances does a great job of that. So, we respectfully request, on behalf of Jason, that you approve this application for an R3 zoning classification to allow this proposed cottage-type development on this property. And again, we have no objections to those conditions that have been suggested by the county staff. And the positives, I'll run through. The standards support our application. It meets the comprehensive land use plan. There's no flood plains, no wetlands on this property. Accesses to a major thoroughfare. Their overall neutral impact on county services, separated from Carrington South by Elmer Phillips Road and two buffers. The staff's conclusion was that the subject property appears to be suitable for the proposed rezon. And of course, all of this is possible, only with city water and sewer that's being extended to this property. We ask you for an approval. Thank you for your time.
Andy Bunch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for this opportunity to speak to this board. My name is Andy Bunch. I'm the HOA president in Carrington South, and I've been asked by the board to speak on behalf of the neighborhood. On the matter of rezoning request by Jason Williams of the two parcels, I know we're only looking at one right now, but items two and three both are side by side, right across the street from each other. He's done them as two, because he purchased them as two separate, but we know that. But, I think they should be considered as one, but we're gonna leave it at that. There are proposed, they are proposing in their drawings to have their traffic come out on Highway 67, as you saw. This is to reduce traffic on Carrington Drive, which we brought up at the planning and zoning meeting. They have changed this from their original drawings just to get the board to approve this. We brought this up at the planning and zoning meeting of how bad the traffic will be if approved and allowed to come out on Carrington Drive. Mr. Williams applied for a variance, as multiple people have spoke about tonight. He applied for it on October 7th, the day of the planning meeting, asking for the rezoning to allow access to Carrington Drive instead of Highway 67, because in their words, from their letter on their application states, "The variance allows for ingress and egress onto Carrington Drive rather than Highway 67." It is not expected that GDOT would grant the two accesses onto Highway 67. Such drives would interfere with Carrington Drive, Carrington Drive's traffic. This is just smoke and mirrors. That's all this is. They're doing this to get the approval. That's all they're doing. They're still planning on bringing it out on Carrington Drive. The road listed in item number three, which you will see next, is coming out directly into our turn lane where we enter into Carrington Drive. We come down 67, there's a turn lane. They're expecting to come out right at the beginning of our turn lane as their exit. And they're gonna have a turn lane there too, so there's gonna be two turn lanes and two entrances within probably 50 feet of each other. Take a look at Carrington Drive. It's approximately less than 700 feet in length. Right now, this road is, this road has approximately 613 trips per day, according to the county standards of 7.3 trips per household per day from Carrington South. By approving this new rating and allowing the density to be extremely high, it will increase by 1,766 trips per day. With the added trips added, there will be 2,379 trips a day on 600 feet of road. Carrington Drive has only two outlets, Highway 67 and Elmer Phillips Road. And Elmer Phillips being a dirt road, nobody wants to go down it because it's not suitable to travel. As anyone can see, this will create nothing but a traffic jam at any time of the day or night, and especially during peak hours. And the possibility of accidents will be greatly increased. Please consider this. There will be four roads adjacent to each other. In their original plans, both sides come out dead even with each other onto Carrington Drive, okay? There will be roads adjacent to each other from the two proposed parcels on Carrington Drive for the new development to try to merge onto Carrington Drive, which will be nearly impossible during peak hours. Also, Planning and Zoning recommends that there be turn lanes on Carrington Drive for all four entrances to the new neighborhoods. Is the county prepared to widen and add a center turn lane to accommodate this infrastructure on Carrington Drive? The reasons we're opposing this development for the rezoning of the two parcels to R3 are, we want our area to stay single-family home areas. We know that it may not, but we want it to stay that way because that's the way it is. We don't want all the noise congestion that will be created by the increase of the amount of residents in the area, four to five times what they are already. We don't want to have to deal with the increased traffic and noise that this will create. To show our concerns, we submitted a planning, to Planning and Zoning meeting, a petition from the homeowners of Carrington South, showing that we did not want this rezoning to happen. And I have that with me tonight, and I had a copy placed with each of you tonight. I'd like to ask that all present tonight that oppose this rezoning to please stand. Thank you. With all this said, Mr. Chairman and board, we implore you to deny the rezoning of these two parcels to R3. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bunch didn't leave me much time, but I did sign up for item three, so. My name's Emery Lane, I live in Carrington South. I'm a member of homeowners, I've lived there for eight years, we love it. We have 84 homes in Carrington South. I think that the, the commission should consider both items two and three. If you look at your screens, we see a representation of both items two and three side by side and how it would affect the area. Both have the same impact on the area, and this is how it's going to look together if you give approval. We're R25. Let's take a look at how we're situated for R3 around us. We see Carrington South, center left, the two new developments, and if we start at the hammocks across 67, we have 93 units existing, R3. Going clockwise, we're asking for 242 more units to be approved, R3. Soho Villas directly behind us, 88 units. Planters Row across Harville behind us, 128 units existing. Soho's under construction. Going further clockwise, at the end of Elmer Phillips, on the right of JCT, developments was approved for 91 units. And now, we have Ottawa Farm Properties, 330 apartments, 70 townhomes, and five to seven acres of commercial. Carrington South is now an island of R25 surrounded by three, R3. And I think it's completely incompatible to drop R3 right on our doorstep. We currently are working with the sheriff to find out who's shooting guns right behind, right behind Carrington. It's a regular occurrence of late, 1:00, 2:00 in the morning. Parties, music, noise, we're dealing with it all just from the existing properties, and we sure don't want it. Density, did some research, the Smart Bullet Plan recommends from two to four design density, units per acre. And we can see Soho Planters Row and Hammocks fall right in there. Of course, Carrington's at one, we're R25, but you're being asked to approve 9.1 and 7.3 units per acre. That's quite a density change from what we have currently in our area. The variance, we've heard about that this morning, I didn't know if it was going to come up. Traffic, using your numbers, Mr. Bunch covered this, we're looking at a 300% increase in traffic if this is approved. Mr. Bunch mentioned the 700 feet, Carrington Drive about 700 feet. I think what's going to happen is DOT is not going to approve it, because you're going to have, there's three existing entrances on the 67 within a little more than a quarter mile. We have the Davidson driveway, Carrington, and Elmer Phillips. Now, we're asking DOT to put in three more within a quarter mile, just don't think it's going to happen. I don't think Mr. Williams thinks it's going to happen either. So, I think people are going to get frustrated waiting to get on 67. I do now, during peak hours. If they take Elmer Phillips to take advantage of the new traffic circle on Harville, which I would do, I'll avoid all that, but yet I'm going to wear out Elmer Phillips. I don't think the county, the planning and zoning's economic analysis included paving Elmer Phillips, because that's what it's going to take if the road's going to hold The economic analysis by P&amp;Z, it says it's going to cost the taxpayers about $27,000 a year for the next seven years. I know most developments are going to cost money, I understand that, but I just want to just bring that to your notice. The factors, the only positive factor in the P&amp;Z analysis was the utilities, water and sewer, it's going to be state spiral. The fiscal was negative, schools, law enforcement EMS fire, negative. They said traffic was neutral, I differ. The traffic's going to be, is going to be a negative impact. So, I respectfully request that you vote for denial for items two and three. Thank you for your time.
We have Paul Newman, four.
Hello, thank you guys for letting me speak today, sorry I have a cold. I own PMG Rentals and have known Jason Williams for quite some time. I have my hand on the real estate market, I'm in, own a real estate company and own a rental company. Right now, PMG Rentals manages about 1,500 properties, and we are 100% full. So, let's get into that just a little bit. That's going to make the new, we're truly turning down people that could be good residents of our community. We are 100% full, and we know projects are on the way, but they're not here yet. So, we are, you know, it is going to make for higher cost for tenants, and we know some of this stuff is already unaffordable for purchasers, so people are going to start needing, you know, they're going to need housing. And this area is in a true growth area for Bullock County. I can't think of a better area for development for Bullock County. I know Jason, he's of high character, he wants to make this a very nice project for the community. So, it will be a very nice project, and we've got an older population that's growing that is going to need places to live, and I truly believe that this project will be a good thing for the county. And, you know, that's what I wanted to let you guys know.
We have Jason Williams. Rollins.
I'll go first, Steve Rushing.
Okay, so it's back to you.
Yes, I would like to address the, the road situation, because it does look like it's gone back into, and it has. We did initially propose, and that was after having the pre-zoning meeting with the staff, and the county engineer thinks they ought to be on to Carrington South Drive, that's how we originally proposed it. It was not until our planning commission meeting, the first one, that it was determined that there are some supplemental standards for multifamily that require direct access to an arterial or collector road. That became used to us at that time, so we had to shift at that, from that hearing to meet the county ordinance to access an arterial or collector road, which Georgia Highway 67 meets that, but it in fact is a state road, which requires the GDOT approval. So, we are intending on working on that, but they won't consider it until we get the rezone and we have an actual project, but that is still our intent. But we do have a backup plan where if, and again, with working with the county engineer, if it requires one access on Carrington South and one on 67, that's what we'll do, working with the county engineer and the state. This is just a zoning here, and there'll be a final sketch plan once the state and the county work the roads out. So, it's not that we're trying to shift anything against Carrington South, we want to try to work with them, with the road system, and that's the history of how we got to where we were on the roads. Again, we ask you for your approval of this development.
Are there any questions concerning those in this application by the commissioners?
I have a question, Vice Chairman. So, this sketch plan for right now, what we're asking, what's being asked for is for all exits to be on Highway 67, is that correct? Is that what's?
Yes, Mr. Simmons, that is correct. We're asking for an R3 zone.
Yeah.
And this is our sketch plan that we are proposing to access directly to 67 tonight, yes.
And are we going to bunch two and three together? We are to vote on them separately?
Sir.
I think separately, yeah.
Any other questions by any county commissioners or staff?
Mr. Bunch or Mr. Lane, whichever, want a lot of answers, they all both done pretty good with his presentation. What would Carrington South be happy with there? Far as the zoning?
We don't have a problem with the R3. We don't want the density, because the density is going to create nothing but headaches for everybody. If he would reduce the number of units, we suggested at one of the planning and zoning meetings that he make it like the hammocks across the street in the cottages, so they would be single-story homes rather than two-story townhomes. We thought that would look more congruent with what we have and be more desirable for everybody. I understand his cost-wise, but that's not our problem. He spent the money on the property. We want him to do something that's a little bit downsized from what he's trying to do.
Okay, so I make the statement that we can continue with the R3 as long as y'all and y'all be happy with that. You know, you're not sitting here telling, well, because I read, reading your thing, you're not sitting here telling me that you want it to be just like Carrington South.
We would like it to be R25, but I'm not saying that we can't agree on something. But I have had a meeting with Mr. Williams, and he's told me flat out that it's never going to go down in anything that pretty much, it's going to stay with the same number, and the density is just going to be too much, period. So, I think the R3 doesn't need to be approved.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, are we ready to vote on this?
Are there any other discussion or question? At this time, we'll entertain a motion on this application.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I make a motion that we accept this rezoning with the conditions.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, questions? If there are none, please signify in favor by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried 4 to 1. Item number three, Jason Williams has submitted an application to rezone approximately 7.08 acres from R40 residential, 40,000 square feet, to R3 residential, 15,000 square feet, for the purpose of creating a multifamily housing development. The property is located at or near 16287 Highway 67. Mr. Pope.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. As previously stated, this agenda item is really the same location. This is the property just north of the previous agenda item on Carrington Drive, again, with road frontage on Highway 67, Carrington Drive, and Elmer Phillips. For the rezoning purposes, this parcel is for the larger of those two pieces as outlined on the southern portion of it. This was the original sketch plan. Again, the applicant has filed for a variance through Planning and Zoning Commission for access on the Carrington Drive, which that'll be heard next week. But for technical, you know, to meet the ordinance, the access would have to come from Highway 67 at this point. This is the revised site plan that the applicant was, has submitted. And again, for reference, this is the side of Carrington Drive and the current use of And with that, I'll go back to the site plan. Staff does have a few conditions in the staff report if approval is granted, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends denial by 3 to 1 vote. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Steve Rushing, who's representing the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Pope, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioners, once again. This is the same developer, Jason Williams. The two properties, the reason we have two applications, were two estates. You know, that's where, usually we're able to buy property is when someone dies and the kids live off, as in this case, or they're no longer using it, and that's how Mr. Williams was able to acquire both of these properties. This particular tract, there's two of them, they're both 11 acres total, but we're only looking to develop this seven-acre parcel. This was the Judge Fay Sanders Martin property, and Jason purchased that from her two daughters, just recently closed on that. Yes, we went through the same thing on the roads with this one. We had it going to Carrington South Drive for the same reason, that same ordinance, the supplemental standard is what we're told, is it requires this multifamily project to access Highway 67 as an arterial road. Now, again, the DOT can't give us a yay because we're not to that, but it's our understanding that they, they don't think that they could have, would have a problem with this access, at least to this particular seven-acre tract. So, that's how we got to where this access to 67 is. Once again, this has some of the same characteristics of the property across the street, little or no wetlands, no flood plains, it's on a major thoroughfare, you've got water and sewer coming to it, it just makes perfect sense. You see the other R3s in the area, and there's a reason for that. But when you get on this main road, we just don't see that that's going to be the traffic problem that maybe the Carrington South folks anticipate, or at least that's what our traffic study tells us. Once again, the county staff addressed the standards of review that govern your determination, and once again, they stated it appears to be suitable for the proposed use, and once again, did apply some conditions similar to the property across Carrington Drive, and those, all of those conditions are also acceptable to Mr. Williams if, should you choose to grant our rezone request. It's the similar balance, pretty much everything I said on the other property. This one's going to have a little bit more green space, but in relation to the number of units, but we just think it's similar to the one across the road, it meets all the requirements, and we would ask that you likewise grant approval of this R3 zoning application. Thank you.
I mean, it's just the same, same argument before.
I would, just, the lack of available rentals right now is just my big argument for professional housing, so thank you.
Jason Williams. Hayden Rollins. Emery Lane. And Andy Bunch.
I know you approved the one, you're probably going to approve the second one, but I want to address Mr. Newman's remarks about needing rentals. Me being the HOA president in Carrington South, I deal with all the homeowners, the rentals. PMG is one of them, they have multiple homes in our neighborhood. They don't maintain anything. They make, I just had a case.
They make, I just had a case two weeks ago where I had to call the police because one of their renters had a dog that tried to attack the lady next door. And I called them, they said, "We'll do something about it." I haven't heard anything about anything. Nothing's been done. So being, needing rentals, that's fine. I understand that. But the noise, the aggravation, everything that comes from rentals is not worth the aggravation, especially when you're fixing to put 240 units in front of a single-family home area that has nothing but people that have built or bought there. They're planning on living probably the rest of their life there. Now everything's going to go downhill completely and it's going to create a problem. So I ask that you please deny this one. If you approve one, I know that's fine, but deny this one. Maybe that'll make him back up and punt and maybe take it to R25. Make it single-family homes or smaller plots of something of that sort. But we ask that y'all please deny this. Our neighborhood deserves this.
You know, Mr. Bunch made some good points. What I would state here is that Jason Williams intends to own all of these units. Jason's already met with Mr. Bunch at least once. I know they tried to meet a second time. He's very open to discussions with him, but he will be the owner of all of these units. It's not like you'd have to call 200 folks if you have issues with it, but you're going to have one common owner. He plans to do a, if you've seen any of the work that Jason has done, he and his wife, I mean, they're, they're beautiful units. This will be that way. I know they're expecting the worst, but I don't think Jason's going to let that happen because these is going to be his properties and his retirement, his investment. And we will, I'm sure he will do his best working with either Mr. Bunch or whoever the HOA president is of Carrington South to make this a wonderful neighborhood and a good neighbor. Thank you.
Are there any questions or discussion concerning this applicant? Mr. Rushing. He will own this property.
That's his.
What about the roads in, on this property?
He will have to build.
For the right of way.
I'm sorry, he'll have to build those and as long as he's owning it, I'm not sure what the ultimate plans are. Maybe he or Hayden can address the ultimate streets.
So it'll depend on, at the time, whether he wants to build them to county standard or if he wants to maintain them and keep them private, so.
But it'll be his responsibility to maintain these roads inside this.
If he chooses to make them public, he'll have to build them to public standard. So there's a different standard and a different process you go through to publicly deed roads over to the county. So it, it would be up to him on whether or not he would make them public or private.
The county would have to accept them.
Yes.
His way.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions, Commissioners?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Can I have just a few more seconds?
You have some time left.
I understand what Mr. Rushing said, that Mr. Williams is planning on owning all these properties. So that means now we have 242 rentals in our neighborhood. And I only have 22 right now that are a nightmare. So imagine what 242 are fixing to do. It's just, it's not feasible and the density that it's going to cause is just unbelievable. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this application.
We have a motion to approve. Can I have your second?
With the conditions?
With the conditions.
With conditions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion passed, four to one. Before we get to the next item, if any of you would like to leave, please do so. Item number four, Kyle Hayden has submitted an application to rezone approximately 10.55 acres from R80 residential, 80,000 square feet, to R3 multifamily residential, 15,000 square feet for the purpose of creating a multifamily housing development. The property is located at 424 Brandon Drive. Mr. Pope.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. As stated, item four is a rezon request. This lot or parcel for rezoning is approximately 10 acres, just over 10 acres. Currently zoned as an R80 parcel. Location is generally referenced as the west, to the west of Statesboro, along, near Cypress Lake Road. However, is on Brandon Drive. This is the current zoning for the property. As you'll see, primarily along Brandon Drive are single-family homes. The entry access for the development would be approximate to that Country Squire Drive. There are some R2 or really like an R3 zoning from those. That development was prior to zoning, well before zoning in 94. Ever since, most, most development has been single-family homes along Brandon Drive. This is the aerial of the, of the property. There's a single-family home on the property currently, which I believe is, is not in use. Again, sole access is proposed along Brandon Drive. This is a site plan for the property with showing proposed townhomes. And that's looking into the property currently and into the, across the street development. Now, excuse me, if I may, I will say that this case was really kind of the, the one and doing a little more research as staff, kind of brought attention that last year when we updated the zoning ordinance, that supplemental standard that required this multifamily developments to be located on arterial or collector's street. That's really where it came out for us as staff. So the applicant would have to receive a variance to go, to be able to develop this property as an R3. That was something for consideration. There's always, if planning and zoning denied it, I guess they could appeal it and this board could determine that as well. But I think Mr. Akins and I discussed as far as the, being able to move forward on the rezoning for the property. You know, it's really contingent upon a variance which would occur later. So again, I just wanted to bring that out in that there is, I guess, that caveat that, you know, that's something for consideration. But with that.
James, let, let me ask you this. So you saying that wasn't no matter how we vote on, I mean, if we vote for this, then they got to come back to see if they can get a variance?
That's correct.
Okay.
That, that variance would be available through the Planning and Zoning Commission, but of course, there's an appeals process that could bring it to this board at a later date.
So the question I got, either way they go, it ain't going to be no time. I mean, in other words, if we don't vote on this and let them get their, or it's got to go on that road, is what you're saying. They're going to try to move the driveway for a variance for that or they're not wanting to move the driveway?
The only access is onto a local street unless that argument is made. The argument for the variance would have to be made as far as capacity of the road, but.
Okay.
So we, we do have a number of conditions recommended in the staff report and then Planning and Zoning Commission recommends a denial by four to zero vote. And with that, I'll turn it over to the, Mr. Cody Rogers for the applicant.
Good afternoon, Cody Rogers, EMC Engineering, 1211 Merchant Way. James, you have the revised concept plan that's got the colors on it? If not, I've got paper copies I can hand out if that'd be acceptable. Upside down doesn't really matter. As long as you can see the colors, you'll get the picture. This is the same concept, it's just got pretty colors on it. This is 47, excuse me, 47 townhome units among eight buildings. As Mr. Pope said, we would only have access on Brandon Drive. That is our only option for this development and we are going to seek the variance for that access. We will have a community water system via well and individual septic systems. This is in the comprehensive plan as Mr. Pope went over. We'll have that wetland area in the back to act as a buffer. This is 10.55 acres, 47 units on 10.55 acres is 4.45 units per acre, which is well below the R3 threshold or limit in the ordinance. The R3 is only meant to give us the ability to construct townhomes here. I'll answer any questions that you or the public may have.
Stacy Webb.
Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioners, Tom, Ms. White. My name is Stacy Webb and I'm a lifelong resident of Bullock County. I've lived it at 107 Lancaster Point for the past 32 years. I'm here to speak on behalf of our neighborhoods in opposition to this rezoning request. I would like to, I would like to review the petition that we've sent before you. I hope you've had a chance to review it. It now has over 85 signatures indicating that most of these neighbors oppose, neighborhoods oppose the request for these 47 townhomes. Per your departmental review, there are five negative impacts, including a $35,000 shortfall of expenditures over revenues, an insufficient number of law enforcement, fire, EMT staff, staff, as well as equipment for proper protection, not only these 47 townhomes, but our homes as well. Additionally, the review indicates a 1.5 acre deficiency for public park spaces. It also asks to change this address from a low-density, single-resident area to high-density, multifamily area where four and a half units per acre is indicated. In addition to the staff's review, we have concerns regarding traffic where 343 new in-and-outs to these townhomes will greatly increase, increase traffic and congestion as well as challenge our current road infrastructure. Additional concerns are solid waste, water supply, septic tanks and drain fields, the loss of the organic character of our neighborhood and the loss of property values. I'd like to speak about the two that I'm most concerned with. And the first is the water issue. I believe the new pavement, along with the removal of many of the trees and vegetation, will greatly increase the runoff water. But more importantly, we are concerned with the underground water from equivalent of 47 septic tanks. I've spoken to several members of our neighborhood about their water uses just to make sure I could come up with an estimate of how much each one of these families would use. Most indicate that they use slightly around 175 to 200 gallons per day. And using this amount with 47 townhouses served by 47 septic tanks, we will see between 8,000 and 9,000 gallons of water per day being put into the ground. If you ever worked with underground water movement, it's quite fascinating. As long as gravity is still in play, this water will leach down into the area behind the proposed development, work its way down behind Lancaster Point into the basin area at Cypress Lake Road and Veterans Memorial Highway. This basin, when we get heavy rains, nearly floods Cypress Lake Road. And just imagine adding 9,000 gallons per day, enough to fill a regular-sized residential pool every other day. And I certainly think this will cause flooding in this area. Secondly, I fear this development of 47 townhouses will forever change the character of our neighborhood. For well over 40 years, residents of these neighborhoods have bought and paid taxes on their properties realizing that it was zoned R80. To grant this request will go against everything we have invested in our neighborhoods. I also believe these multifamily townhouses will bring a different clientele in. Many will either be professors or students at Georgia Southern or others who will live there for two years and then move on. Ours is not a transit neighborhood. Our families have lived here for more than, for many years in maintaining our homes and yards, paying taxes, in many cases, well over 40 years. We as neighbors know each other, help each other, and in, in many ways, interact with each other. Studies have shown that these 47 townhouses will lead to a more transit neighborhood as well as a lower property values for our homes. In fact, according to Zillow, values have dropped in our neighborhood by three to 5% in just the last 30 days since this proposal has come up. Is it because of these proposed townhouses? Don't know. Additionally, I believe traffic, traffic safety and congestion will be a problem. I'm sure the engineers say that they can mitigate these issues by engineering solutions. But in reality, if you approve this rezoning request, you will have in fact, re-engineered our neighborhood at a cost to us as net taxpayers. And before I close, I would like for all of those who oppose this request to stand. Would all of those who are in favor of this request, please stand. And finally, I would ask that you follow the suggestions of your departmental review where there were five negative impacts, including a $35,000 negative physical impact, yet the report cites zero positive impacts, zero positive impacts. I would also ask that you follow the decision of the county Planning and Zoning Board where they unanimously voted to deny this request. In light of these facts, we as Bullock County taxpayers, paying citizens, ask that you deny this request. Thank you.
Shelley Roundtree.
Thank you, Commissioners, for letting me speak tonight and thank you for your public service for the county, Bullock County. There are several things I want to point out and I'm going to be working from the county departmental review. And I'm going to be working from the county departmental review and documents that Mr. Hayden presented for his application. The first thing is that the current permitted density is 0.545 per acre. Proposed density is 4.45 units per acre. And that is a density increase of 716%. We have leaped over six levels of zoning. The applicants, when we're talking about, is it the proposed use adversely affect the existing use of the property? Yes. If you compare the zoning map, which I made a handout for you, a teacher with a handout, for part C and C1 and attachment D, you can see visually the vast difference in what's there and what is proposed. And also, I'd like to point out that this is federally identified wetlands that it backs up to. Now, if we get this kind of a development coming in and all the things that soak up the water, this was yesterday, or I took this this morning after last night's rain. This is common, this is how it looks frequently when it rains. If you take out and pave all that water from the forty-seven units, the paving is going to flow down and continue to go back here on Cypress Lake Road. And I took that from my car window on Cypress Lake Road. It can't soak into the concrete. And then you've got your forty-seven septic tanks heading that way, too. It makes no sense to me. The owner, as far as the substantial reasons why this should not be passed, the owners that are living in the established developments here, Hazelwood, Barclay Downs, Country Squire and others, we purchased these properties specifically based on the nature of single-family homes on roomy parcels. The homes, some of the, I mean, we're talking about homes and neighborhoods that are forty years old, thirty, forty years old. The homes have been extremely well-maintained through the decades. The area is very desirable for that reason. The large development would change the decades in this area, or would change the entire nature of the area and degrade the home values. And actually, it's such a drastic change from R80. And let me tell you what, it went, so it's R80. Could they have gone to R40? No. R25? No. R15? No. R8? No. R2, two-family residential? No. All the way to multifamily, high-density, R3. If this is, if this jump is acceptable, then to me zoning becomes meaningless. In regard to streets, Brandon Drive is 2.1 miles in length, stop sign to stop sign. There are no paved edges. There's no even a little bit of extra paving, it's just rock and gravel. You can't walk along there, it's not built for high density. Let's see. Also, is it compatible with the purpose and intent? Well, I would say if you're just talking about is it a place to live, it's compatible. But it's not compatible with what's there. And what it appears to me is that the purpose and intent of the developer is to maintain maximum private profit for a few over the nature and value of long-established property owners there that live there now. When we purchased our property, we understood the regulations and acted accordingly. And that's what I reasonably expect to be upheld by this zoning board. Wouldn't, I mean, change happens, but it must be responsible. And on part, on your part one, or A there, the neutral impact. The proposed development is a slightly greater density than anticipated for this location according to, not now, the future development map of, is that 2040? Okay, sixteen years. Now, what is an apartment complex going to look like in sixteen years? And even then, it's saying that's more than what would be predicted for 2040. Just a couple, oops, sorry. I would just ask you to please just consider that developers need to be held to a high standard. You can't jump over six levels just to put money in your pocket. There should be reason on both sides when it comes to responsible change in development. We should not have to fight tooth and nail for what is already established. And I just hope you will consider all the information in this handout. I know I'm over my time and our petition and just the facts of what's been established, the people that are here. Oh, and this is, this is the federally protected wetlands that are going to just be a mess on Cypress Lake Road. So if you're talking about not just our feelings, but county money, that's going to cost a lot. Thank you.
All right, just one more time, an illustration of, you know, how much greenery there is on this development. The green, the yellow, the blue, the lighter green is all pervious area. It's all grass. It's woods. The yellow is those federally protected wetlands that will not be impacted as part of this project. The red and shades of gray are the impervious areas where you would have that runoff. And of course, you're going to have to have some impervious area to have a development at all. That blue is the detention pond that is being proposed to control that runoff to at least pre-development rate, if not choke it down even more if we need to, after we do a downstream analysis of one of those crossings, or of the next downstream crossing, which we'll have to do as part of our permitting with Bullock County's Engineering Department and Planning and Zoning Department, as I'm sure you're all aware. The runoff was the main concern that I wanted to touch on. Septic systems was another concern I heard. I believe there is not city sewer available in this area. So I believe all the residents in this room are on individual septic systems in this area now. I don't believe it's causing an issue, at least I'm not aware of it causing an issue. So we're proposing to develop this property similarly with the same individual septic systems. Septic systems do not contribute to surface runoff while you will have infiltration in the ground. Of course, that is how they work. There would be no increase to surface runoff at all. And there'd be no chance of your septic system infiltrating down and contaminating any sort of groundwater source, because of course, we get our water from aquifers. And the whole purpose of the septic system is to infiltrate that water and clean it well before it gets anywhere near an aquifer level. And that's not how aquifers recharge. Property values diminishing, that is the first I've heard, honestly, of a Bullock County property value diminishing in several years because of all the development. Development adjacent to your property generally increases your property values. And I think a lot of people can attest to that who are getting some of these offers for their properties. The adjacent R2 zoning to the north there is essentially the same product that we're talking about bringing to the table here. That is the Westbrook subdivision, I believe. You also have Country Club Villas and similar development in the works, Willow Pond Cottages in the area. So this would not be the first of its kind in this area. Today's rain, obviously, or last night's rain, is obviously an issue. We saw the picture of the wetlands and the wetlands were doing their job. They were catching that stormwater, they're treating it like it should be. We also got over ten inches of rain in Statesboro in less than twenty-four hours, which is over a hundred-year storm. That's a lot of water and it's easy to key in on. However, again, developments like this that propose detention ponds will choke that runoff down to pre-development rates. That's why those ordinances are in place. And that's how we have sustainable development today at all, anywhere. Why not zone to a different zoning? It's a valid question. And in this case in particular, the finances just don't work to do a single-family development here. That was looked at, that just doesn't, it doesn't work out. With that, I'll answer any questions this board may have.
Any questions by staff or commissioners from Mr. Rogers?
Mr. Vice Chair, I don't have any for Mr. Rogers, but I would like to ask a question of either Mr. Pope or Mr. Akins. Just for clarification, R3 application, current supplemental standards say an R3 has to be on arterial or collector, correct? Okay, so I guess according to either our current transportation plan, G dot functional classification, or the transportation plan currently update being drafted, it's a local road? Hence, needing the variance?
And I don't, you know, it would probably be cleaner if this came in with a variance decided to make the decision. And if you deferred it, I don't know how, it would take a little time for the variance to be decided. But that would have been preferential. And I just felt that when we, you know, it happened. And that's, I just want to bring it to light. I mean, you know, we aren't just going to let it pass through without bringing it up. I mean, it's a difficult situation. But, you know, I think it's probably cleaner if the variance was approved or denied.
Agreed and understood. But the concern I have is that the common standard for a variance is created when there's a unnecessary or undue hardship owing to the conditions peculiar to a piece of property. In this case, you know, the standard is pretty obvious as far as, you know, the access requirement. So whether the, and folks do have a right to apply for a variance, but I think in managing expectations, you've got to take into consideration if the Planning and Zoning Commission or ultimately if appealed, the county commission were going to rely on the variance standards and the ordinance, how in good conscience could a variance be approved? And, you know, I'm just walking through that procedurally and logically. I'm not trying to besmirch the process or besmirch the right of an applicant to have a variance. And yeah, it would have been more ideal to carry variance application along with the rezoning application. But, you know, I just, I would hate, I would hate to see the P and Z or the county commission go down a slippery slope when we went through such extraneous measures to fix the ordinances. And then, yeah, we may have to accept a variance that may not meet a standard. But I think we have to be honest in our expectations to the, with expectations to the applicant so they know what they're getting into. And I just state that as a matter of fact, you know. And then if the board does, the Board of Commissioners approves an R3 tonight and a variance isn't approved, then you're stuck with sort of a useless R3 out there, you know. So I'm just, again, stating that as a matter of logic and practicality. You know, the board, the P and Z, the applicant can go forward that as we wish. But, you know, I have limited time to give advice and some people may not care about it, or they may. But in this case, I think we have to be careful not to go down a slippery slope. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. Akins? Opine?
Well, I don't really have anything to add, except I agree with Mr. Couch. If it's rezoned and there's no variance, then you really can't develop it. So you'd probably have to come back and rezone it to something else. When is the variance going to be heard, James?
Yeah, there's not been one submitted at this point.
Oh, there hasn't been one submitted, okay.
James, just for future references, it just doesn't matter either way. I just, they're going for R3. What zoning would be allowed on that road? I mean, I'm not suggesting anybody do anything. I just want to know that for future references of my own knowledge. Never mind, I see you.
Well, in an open meeting with, off the top of my head, I don't want to say R2, but probably an R2. I mean, yeah, well.
Okay, I mean, I was just.
R2, single-family and two families are treated differently than a multiple family, so.
The difference in this, in Highway 67, there's a lot of difference, is the reason I'm saying. I was just, I'll find out what you will.
Well, yeah, that's right.
If they ain't submitted a variance, and we only have forty-five days, we take it, correct? To hear it again?
Right, I, yeah, under the, with that new law, I don't think the variance would be heard by the next commissioners' meeting. So you still wouldn't know. Am I right, James? The timeframe would be, P and Z wouldn't hear it.
Right, yeah, I mean, that's a very good point.
I guess you could defer it. I mean, if you don't want to deny it, if you could, you can see if the variance is granted, you could defer it for more than forty-five days with the applicant's consent. That's another option.
Mr. Simmons? Mr. Chairman, I think we're kind of putting the cart before the horse here. I mean, you ain't got a variance. How are we going to vote on something that, it just don't seem like we can do this? We can't vote on this if we don't have a variance. To me, we can either do two things. Either we can deny this request, or we can defer it till we get a variance. Am I right in what I'm saying?
Well, as we spoke either last night or Monday night, Mr. Akins, would there be an opportunity for the applicant to consent for withdrawal and resubmit, resubmit the R3, but having the right, which they do, to submit the variance concurrently?
Yeah, that would be a possibility. Now, the variances require, because of this new state law, require a longer advertising period. So I don't, would they be heard at the same meeting, James, at P and Z?
Yes, I believe so.
They would, okay.
I make a motion, we deny this request tonight.
We have a motion to deny. Is there any further discussion by staff or commissioners? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion? We've been here since five o'clock. Can we take about a five-minute break? Because I'm on, I'm on about.
Mr. Simmons needs a nap.
No, I, yeah, I need a nap and I need to go down the road there a little bit.
We have a five-minute recess. If everyone would, please be respectful to the speakers and remain silent. Item number five, Eagle Creek Construction Incorporated has submitted an application to rezone approximately 42.5 acres from Ag 5, Ag 5 Industrial to 40,000 residential, 40,000 square feet, R40 residential, 40,000 square feet, for the development of a single-family residential neighborhood. The property is located on 6417 Arcola Road. Mr. Pope.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. As shown on this map here, this is general location of the property. Again, located on Arcola Road, just north of Mud Road at that intersection. This is the current zoning map. Again, this parcel is zoned Ag 5 and nearby and surrounding property zoning is also Ag 5. An area of the property, you know, shows its current use, as well as surrounding properties are currently used, you know, as agriculture. This is site plan that is proposed by the applicant. Again, with primary or sole access on Arcola Road. And these are photos of the location when we placed the zoning sign on the property. With that, staff recommends a denial of the rezone request. However, we do have a number of conditions if approval is considered. And Planning and Zoning Commission recommends a denial by four to zero vote. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. John Dotson, who's representing the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Pope, Commissioners. Thanks for the opportunity to come for you. As Mr. Pope has said, we have some 48 acres on this property. It's located 1.7 miles from US Highway 80. It is 0.5 miles from Mud Road. It is not within the character area, but it is close to the character area. We will have a private water system. We have an amenities package that is shown on there. It is significant wetlands on the west side and the east side with no impact. We plan to develop and incorporate a stormwater detention pond for stormwater runoff. There should be a negative impact to that. As I said, single-family homes, I think we have shown 31 lots. Each lot would be either R40 or larger. Recently, as long as three months ago, I believe it was, there was a R20, R40 subdivision approved on the Brooklyn Denmark Road, which is well out of the character area. I'll try to answer any questions that you may have, and we would ask for your support. Thank you.
Jennifer Carstens.
Just going to read this because I get a little nervous. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for letting me have the opportunity to present my objections to the zoning request. In the SMART comprehensive plan, y'all noted that the Ag 5 was to preserve and sustain rural character lifestyle in the agricultural community, economic, excuse me. And this is not incongruent with that. When you look at the neighborhood, most of them are all five-acre lots, along with wetlands included. The local infrastructure, I do not believe, could meet the proposed development. It's a county-maintained two-lane road that's in currently a moderate to average condition. And there's estimated a 40% traffic count increase. Just with that, and there's already been an increase over the last few years. It would need additional public transportation, trash pickup. And already, the fire and EMS response times to the location fall short of the NFPA levels of service, and the sheriff's office staffing is currently below national standards, impacting their reaction times as well. The planning and zoning review highlighted several issues with a final impact summary with four negative impacts and six neutral impacts. The only positive impact is the fiscal economic, and that total is merely $18,848 based on a seven-year build-out. I would hope that you would go along with the planning and zoning's recommendation and not approve. Thank you.
Horace Harrell.
I'm Horace Harrell. My address is 916 Bayberry Court, Pembroke. However, a large portion of my property does adjoin Arcola Road. We can't bring a whole lot of community people in here like some of the previous presentations where we have a subdivision. The area is basically large farms or Ag 5. And I do live on what was a large farm, which was subdivided into Ag 5. That was the reason I moved from Statesboro, was to get to a less involved area. So now we have development in this area. The Commission has seemed like for quite a while now that they have lived by the Field of Dreams movie. If you rezone it, they will come. And as far as planning and development, I really appreciate you. If I was ignored as many times as you have seemed to be when you have made recommendations and been overruled, I would have given up long before this, but I hope this time they do listen to you. Jennifer was a little bit optimistic about the quality of the road. Like today with the rains we have, I'm going to have to ride the center line because there are basically ruts in the road. I go to a church that's about six miles from my home, close to Arcola Road. We have a security alert. I'm usually there before the sheriff's department can get there. Now, this particular area, when we first moved out jokingly, we said, we're 10 miles from everything, but that's what we wanted to be. But this particular development is also 10 miles from everything. They're 10 miles from fire service, basically volunteer. We're talking about water. They said they're going to put in their own water system. Part of Southern Bullock County has just dug a well to give water to Pembroke. We certainly have the Hyundai thing going on now. We're looking at all the development, and this is right on the very fringe of it. And they're going to dig another major well for, what was it, about 40 more houses? They're going to have septic. Now, sometime the county said they're going to have city water and sewage in this area of development. But the point is, that's years away. Now, the Commission has already approved thousands of new developments in the city and outside, but near. Bryan County has approved thousands, Effingham thousands, Chatham County's thousand. We're not in a race to see who can get the most houses under process. Until all these get filled up, I think that we're far too early in trying to make all these transitions now to make all these rezonings. When all these things get filled up, I think again, that might be a time. But I will say one thing, because I heard it the last time this came up, which was just before the moratorium. All those houses that are going to be on that area, you're going to hear a lot of complaints from those people when that farm next door puts chicken manure on their fields. And they're going to smell it. So I would urge you, there's a lot of reasons, fire, sheriff, water, road, and I'm not even going to say if they want to get to I-16. Arcola Road has been closed twice this year already, once for a matter of weeks at the time. It's not a great road. There's a lot of things that need to be done if this is ever approved, and it shouldn't be approved at this time. Thank you.
Diane Smith.
Thank you. I'm Diane Smith. I live at 6701 Arcola Road, which joins this property to the north. There are the wetlands where they're going to put the retaining ponds is between us. The traffic is horrendous. I've almost gotten hit numerous times trying to get out on the highway. I agree with everything that everyone said before. The only problem I've had is my husband passed away at home seven years ago. Still haven't seen the ambulance. Everyone else found their way. It was, I'm not throwing off on them, but Amy's. I'm not throwing off on them by any means, because they're all overworked. But just consider, I think that the five acre, I will not argue with that, but developers can earn the same money if you would just consider not approving this. Thank you.
Ginger Barnard.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Ginger Barnard. I reside at 6931 Mud Road. The property being discussed is located diagonally from my property address, or I'm sorry, diagonally from my property across Arcola Road. I remain in firm opposition to this rezon request. Arcola Road and Mud Road have steadily gotten busier. This proposed development will create that much more traffic. People do not adhere to the speed limit on either road as it is. The proposed development's entrance is located on a bad curve, which has limited visibility. And I have personally witnessed several instances where vehicles have run the four-way stop signs at the intersections of Arcola and Mud. I feel that the infrastructure is not here at this time to accommodate so many new people. Thank you for letting me speak.
Dennis Akins.
My name's Dennis Akins, and I'm the farmer that's gonna put out the chicken litter. So I would request that you deny this application, but I'm most of all concerned about what it's gonna cost the county. How much more services, which has already been stated tonight, is it gonna cost the county? So I want to thank you, Commissioners, for your time and effort that you take. Thank you.
Are there any questions by any of the Commissioners? Discussion? There's time still left on the clock if you want to come back. Mr. Dodson.
The proposed developer is planning on building a quality project. There are vegetative buffers along the farm that Mr. Akins was talking about along all four sides. We plan to leave those in place, enhance them in areas that we don't need to, but still we would like to ask for your support. Thank you.
If any of the ones that are opposing this rezon, we have 2 minutes and 29 seconds left if you would like to speak. Are there any questions by the county commissioners or any discussion at this time? If none, we will entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I'd like to make a motion of denial on this rezon request.
We have a motion for denial. Do I hear a second? We have a motion and a second. Not any further discussion. If none, all in favor signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion denied.
Well, motion approved.
Motion approved for denial. Before we get to the next item, if you'd like to leave at this time, feel free to Item number six, Elizabeth B. Veale, as agent for Big Place Land Company, LLLC, has applied for a rezon of 57.7 acres from Ag 5 agricultural five acres to R25 residential 25,000 square feet for the purpose of developing a subdivision. The property is located on Old Riggs Mill Road. Mr. Pope.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. This rezon request, as shown on the map here, it's generally, well, west of Statesboro. This is the current zoning map. Again, with this, there's surrounding properties that are currently used in agricultural use. There are some single-family homes that have recently been constructed, fronting Old Riggs Mill Road. And then, to the south of Old Riggs Mill Road, there are approximately three or four R3 developments. And as proposed, the access for this development would be on Key Akins Road. And these are photos along Key Akins Road of the approximate location as shown where entry points where the development would be. And that's the current use of the property. And this is a site plan as proposed. Staff recommends a denial of the rezon request. Conditions are recommended if approval is granted. And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends a denial by four to zero vote. And with that, I believe Mr. Cody Rogers is representing the applicant.
Good afternoon. Cody Rogers, EMC Engineering. This is 69 Homes, R25 zoning on 57.7 acres, which is just over one unit per acre, which is closer to an R40 zoning, really. We've got the two access points on Key Akins. Been on Key Akins. It is not a heavily traveled road. There are not many residences on that road. There are the adjacent, more intense zonings that Mr. Pope alluded to there on Old Riggs Mill to the northeast, actually. So we feel this is not a out-of-character request, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Susan Stainback.
My name is Susan Stainback Harrison. I'm the managing landowner at Branch Creek Farm, which is adjacent to, we're on Pulaski Road, adjacent to the proposed project here. This is Ms. Jane Kason. She has asked me to speak on her behalf. She is also an adjacent landowner to the project. Our farm and Mrs. Kason's farm abut each other. She's at 6203 Pulaski Road. We are opposed to the rezoning of the parcel as proposed. This dense development will put a great deal of pressure on our adjacent land uses. We have a photo that we wanted to show here that we're gonna put on the screen. This was provided by Mr. Keys. This is the development parcel today, and this is the view from Key Akins Road that was mentioned. And as you can see, there are already major issues with flooding here, and we'll talk more about that in a minute. But the county has been so wise to create the SMART Bullock 2040 comprehensive plan. And as you know, in this area, it shows rural open space character and natural open space character. We want to encourage you to help us protect these natural resources that are special to Bullock County. We've been investing in our land for these types of land uses for a long time. In fact, this year, Branch Creek Farm invested quite a bit more toward these uses. The land is used for agricultural row crops. There's some of the best farmland in the county in this area. Mrs. Jane Kason feels strongly that food crops and forest are very important to her, on her land and in the area, and those are the special resources of Bullock County. She has asked me to express her strong interest in preserving this agricultural land and the food crops growth in this area. Jane is interested in seeding the future and growing together. We ask you to help us respect the rich agricultural farm heritage and land use in this area. Our farm, Branch Creek Farm, is used for agricultural row crops. It's used for growing timber, for hunting and wildlife habitat, longleaf pine conservation and burning. My family's been preserving and burning longleaf pine here for over 100 years. And for that reason, the Georgia Department of Natural Resources has asked us to work with them to protect sensitive wildlife habitats here on that land, and so we're actively working with them. Our farm is also abuts Cypress Lake. It's the headwaters of Cypress Lake, and it protects wetlands and floodplain lands, Cypress swamp land. This is important because, as backing up to Cypress Lake, these lands soak up a lot of floodwater and let it go into the ground before it goes downstream and into the lake. And as you know, the recent flooding earlier in the year overtopped the dam at Cypress Lake. This plan for dense development will create more storm runoff and potential flooding in this immediate area, and it will overwhelm this system. You can see from the field here, this is, you know, the kind of thing that's been happening frequently. This development will also be in non-conforming land use for the SMART Bullock 2024 plan. The rezoning would put a lot of pressure on the conforming current land uses that are adjacent. This dense development would cause wildlife and environmental detriments, increase our insurance rates, create additional runoff onto our land, and increase flooding. I request that the commission deny the development and respect the unanimous denial for rezoning by the zoning board. Mrs. Jane Kason also requests that you deny and uphold and respect the Ag 5 current zoning and the 2040 zoning plan. I'd also like to ask a few more folks here to stand up who are in support of denying the proposal. Thank you.
Just wanted to address the adjacent land impacts. Obviously, the developer does not intend to have any adjacent land impacts that would be injurious to any nearby landowners. The only property that we're planning to modify would be the property that we're trying to rezon here. As far as adjacent sensitive wildlife preservation, we think that's a wonderful thing. Again, not trying to injure any sort of preservation of sensitive lands or sensitive wildlife. Again, there's pictures, of course, you could probably ride down the road right now and take hundreds of pictures on any road of flooded areas. But that does go back to, as part of the development, we would need to take into consideration that picture and the issues that currently exist, clearly. And we would need to look at the drainage and see if we can improve that, but certainly have to detain our own water so that we don't have a similar situation after their homes out there, even though we can see, obviously, it floods as is at a farm field, which I, you know, I'm not an expert, I'm definitely not a farmer. If the field doesn't have good drainage now, I don't know if it's prime cropland or not. Not sure. Outside of that, you know, just to reiterate, this property owner owns this piece of property. They wish to sell the property in the highest and best use right now. It's also compatible with, you know, the character area there with the adjacent zonings is what we're proposing. It's not an overly dense development at 1.1 something units per acre.
Do any of the Commissioners have any questions or any discussion at this time? If not, we would entertain a motion at this time?
Motion to deny, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman.
Second. We have a motion to deny and a second. Do we have any discussion? If none, all in favor of the motion to deny, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion is approved to deny. All right, if any of y'all like to leave at this time, please do so. Item number seven, Robert K. Bell Jr. Investments Incorporated has applied to rezon 126 acres from Ag 5 agricultural five acres to R40 residential 40,000 square feet for the purpose of creating a subdivision. The property is located on Old River Road North at or near Macedonia Road. Mr. Pope.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. This property is shown on this map, I guess would be northeast Bullock County. Current zoning map for the area and the parcel is shown. Ag 5 zoning surrounds the property. And we have photos of the parcel when we placed the signs. And that's currently, I believe, is planted in pine trees. And then, this is the site plan that was provided by the applicant, which may be somewhat subject to change if it were approved and went through planning and zoning. But anyways, this shows the general density of what is being proposed. So that, I'll say, staff recommends a denial of the rezon request. However, conditions are recommended if approval is granted. Planning and zoning commission recommended a denial by four to zero vote. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Robbie Bell.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioners, staff. I appreciate the opportunity to be heard. As all y'all know me, I'm Robbie Bell. I am a developer here in Bullock County and have been developing property for a significant amount of time. Mr. Jim Anderson was listed as the agent, but he had a conflict and couldn't come this evening, so you're stuck with me. We acquired this tract a couple of years ago and immediately planted it in pines, but it was never my intent that this would be a timber tract. I am in the development. I am in the development business and I buy property to develop in some form or fashion. Typically, in the past, we've bought properties in rural areas. We have done some five acre development where we did not create new streets. We just subdivided using existing road frontage. A lot of times, we sell those lots for manufactured homes and owner finance them. We are proposing to do something different with this tract. This tract actually lends itself well to either type of development, and we have already actually subdivided this into five acre tracts that we could sell tomorrow with no infrastructure whatsoever and, you know, exusing existing county roads. But we were looking to do a nicer subdivision that we would invest a significant amount of money into certain improvements such as community water systems with fire flow standards, new internal paved road systems with limited access to public roads so that all lots in our subdivision would, you know, access the internal lots and all of the houses would face internally. None of them would face or utilize the exterior roads. The plan that you see here is actually a little bit different than what we proposed to the planning board because we had a couple of access points on Wendy Hill Road, which we have eliminated, and we're taking all of the access off of Old River Road. So we're looking to do this very similar to a subdivision I developed, Chatham Place over off Herman Rushing Road, the Ashford subdivision off Youngblood Road and River Bluff. Most of those, however, are actually R. 25 subdivisions. This is an R. 40 subdivision, so these lots will be about 70% larger. If you have not driven through one of these subdivisions, I would encourage you to do so. They're very nice. I feel that taking it to R. 40 and lieu of our Ag 5, we are, you're allowing us greater density, but we are giving up things with Ag 5 zoning and essentially being, having more conditions put on us with our residential zoning than we would have with Ag 5 zoning and would allow us to do a more upscale subdivision on this property. You know, currently, if we were to sell these lots as it is, five acre tracts, those folks could use the family provision and in turn, they could subdivide those lots. I'm not saying that would happen, but in theory, you know, we would sell them five acres and then they could sell, you know, have, cut them up for family members without my approval. I know this has been discussed actually in some recent meetings. This tract has no cultivated land on it. As I mentioned, I planted it in trees. There are no floodplains. It is very high land. There are very minimum wetlands. Actually, I think there might be an acre, acre and a half of wetlands on the entire tract, which are just isolated wetlands, none which would be impacted. We would put significant restrictive covenants. Matter of fact, I brought a sample from one of our subdivisions right here if anybody's interested in seeing them. But they would be in addition to the restrictions, of course, that R. 40 zoning would carry. Also, there would be a homeowners association that would enforce these restrictions. The, as I mentioned, all of the lots would face inward. The access would be off of Old River Road. We've talked a lot about roads tonight. Old River Road is a good quality road. It has very low traffic. Old River Road was actually resurfaced a couple of years ago. So rather than all the driveways extending to all surrounding roads of which one is dirt, Williams Landing Road is a dirt road, we would have our, all our access points would be right off of Old River Road. After the planning board meeting, I actually have spoken to several of the neighbors and of course, I revised the drawing to, you know, pull access off Wendy Hill Road because it seems like specifically people on Wendy Hill Road had some opposition. I do understand that. I even talked to a couple of the neighbors and some of the adjacent residential uses. We have no problem putting some buffers in place on those if we write them into the covenants and have some undisturbed areas if that would give them some more comfort. We're not here to cause problems with the neighbors. I've met several of them and they're all very nice. You know, we want to be a good neighbor. We talked about septic tanks and I think, matter of fact, Cootie talked about them. I mean, there's 25,000 septic tanks in Bullock County. The Health Department issues septic tank permits all the time. We'd be required to have a level three soil report before we could do anything. Even though it's near the river, it will not create an issue at all. These factors make this an ideal subdivision that would be governed by the subdivision ordinance and additional restrictive covenants rather than an old Ag 5 subdivision. And I'm not seeking a density of R. 2, R. 3, or even R. 25. I'm looking at R. 40. I mean, we've talked about, we saw a density chart earlier, and most of them, I think at 1.1, that was on an R. 25 lot. I'm looking at a lot that's almost twice as big as that. I appreciate the consideration. I hope you approve this request. I'm here to answer any questions you may have. I'll reserve the rest of my time, please.
Tommy Robinson.
Would like to confirm to Angie Dykes, please.
John Hodges is next on the list. So, okay, Angie, what's Angie?
Angie Dykes.
Okay, all right.
I live off Wendy Hill Road. I've spoken with Mr. Bell. We have discussed what he wants to do, and I think his definition of what would improve our neighborhood, our community, is a little different than what we want or what we would like to do. Now, we can't tell anybody what to do with their land, and we would never dream of that. But we're talking 126 houses on a road that, as you come down Old River Road, you go down, you have to stop to turn back to my road. It's a paved, surface-treated road for 13 families. Okay? So we're gonna take our 13 families and we're gonna put 126 people. I don't know about y'all, but economy's gotten tight for all of us. And a lot of times, you're aware, have parents, grown children, grandparents in one home. So it's gonna be a lot more than just mama and daddy and kids. And we understand that it is his land. We would like to see it still in trees. We did not know it was for sale because if we had known it for sale, we'd have been in there too. This is greater than three miles outside of the city limits for the neighborhood. That is based on what SMART Bullock is. And I know y'all wrote it, y'all wrote it, y'all had it researched. We're asking you to help preserve our farmland and help us decrease the density. If, the density is the biggest problem. You know, me personally, I'm healthcare. I've had to call EMS to my house. We had to send somebody to meet the ambulance to bring them back in. I can handle what's going on medically, but what about my neighbors and friends who aren't medical? They're calling one of us. Hopefully, we can get there and help them till EMS can come. I know this county is stretched. I know we're trying to grow. We're not saying don't grow. What we're saying is let's invest in our infrastructure so we can grow safely. Why do we want to put a bunch of people crowded up out here? We don't have the EMS response time. We do not have enough deputies. You crowd a bunch of people up, what happens? People get hot. People get irritated. You need to have more deputies. You need to have more response time. You need to have more support system. We don't need to endanger people. We need to go ahead and support them. Our schools have been at its breaking point since my child was in school. My child's now a grown person. So you build a school and you already have trailers out there? We need to invest in our infrastructure and then yes, let's build something like this. Can we please just look at it and say, hey, maybe we might need to back up and make this less dense? Can't tell the gentleman what to do with his land, and I'm not telling you anything I didn't tell Mr. Bell, and he can tell you that's honest. Please consider decreasing the density because we are a small community and our roads are not where you can travel like this. Not that many people. I appreciate it.
John Hodges.
Hi, my name's John Hodges. I live on Old River Road, very close to the proposed property rezoning. First, thank y'all for y'all's time and efforts trying to help our community, and I know it's sometimes thankless. So I met with Mr. Bell and we had a good conversation. And, you know, I truly believe that after that meeting, I was debating on whether to oppose this or not for several reasons. The main reason is, it may sound like a broken record, but I believe that somebody should be able to do what they want to with their own property. However, that is if it doesn't adversely affect other property owners nearby. And I feel like that this has three ways to go. Either A, y'all prove it and it gets the density he requested, which is gonna be terrible for the area because the county is not in a position to support that. B, it gets denied. And then, as Mr. Bell stated, that what's concerning to me is if we do Ag 5 and then it's family subdivided to five acres or, you know, five houses per five acres, then we're right back at the same density we started at. And so I don't like that option either. The other option is either to A, delay his rezoning request, which I feel at some point in time, the county is gonna catch up and land will be developed and that'll probably happen. The, the, the best option, I think, going forward would be is if either A, he delays his request, or B, he tries to get a subdivision with less density. I think all opposition would go away, and I know mine would, if he did a less dense subdivision that wouldn't affect our families on the roads. My son lives on Macedonia Road. I live on Old River Road, so we're gonna be greatly affected by the, I think it was over 1,100 car trips a day down the road. And the main concern I have as well about development of this density is the effect on the Ogeja River. You know, we've had issues with the river in the past and I've dealt with those, and I don't want to see that happen again. Another option I asked Mr. Bell if he would do is build his own house out there, but apparently he already has a house. He could become my neighbor, but anyhow, that's what I would really like. So, you know, the Bullock County Vision Plan, whatever you want to call it, has recommendations in there for a reason. And the county planning and zoning recommended against approval of this rezoning. And so with the county plan, the county zoning, I request that you deny this. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Lisa English and I live at 3271 Macedonia. And if you look at, if you look at the map, I am the rectangle, the big acre. Mr. Bell says that he talked to the neighbors. I'm the only one on that side. I didn't get a call. I didn't get to, I didn't get him to talk to me. First of all, with anybody that's here to oppose this situation, would you please stand I'm here to oppose it because I am worried about the impact on the river. I am worried about the traffic. I am worried about the sewage because this part of the river is struggling. I wrote down some things. This is a rural community. Mr. Bell's plan doesn't fit the character of the area. I'm a 35-year school teacher and I have dealt with parents, kids, community. And if he had came and spoke to me or called me, I might feel a little bit better, but I feel a little left out because when you look at that map, if what he decides, whether it's beautiful or whether it's trailer trash, I'm gonna be honest, if you look at that and you see where I live, everybody in this room knows where I live. Now, if he had come to speak to me, I would have felt a little bit differently, but I didn't get a call. I didn't get someone to pull up in my yard. I am very concerned and I want you to think about what's gonna go to the environment if you choose to let him do that. I personally would like what Dr. Hodges said and what Ms. Angie said. I do not see this fitting our community. Thank you for your time.
Karen McLean.
I'm Karen McLean, and I didn't speak to Mr. Bell, and I don't want to. I grew up on Macedonia Road. That, our part of our property on Macedonia Road was inherited by me and my three sisters from my father. My father's family has owned better than a mile or two on Macedonia Road for years, years, hundreds of years. I don't like that kind of idea coming out. I live in rural Bullock County, not Statesboro, Georgia. I want my area to remain rural. I live on that property. My son and his children and wife live on that property. A bunch of my cousins still live and friends live on property right there, a quarter mile to a half a mile from this particular monster is what I'm calling it, because I think that's awful to think someone could put, or the county would even approve, something like that coming into our rural neighborhood. We are a small rural community out there. If any of y'all have ever been on Macedonia Road, when these people come and go from that property, they're gonna hit Macedonia Road. They're not gonna hit Old River unless they're going to 301 or Savannah. They're gonna hit Macedonia Road to go to Statesboro. We are 20 minutes out of town. How much further out of town do I have to go to be in the rural area and to stay there? And effectively, in my opinion, I don't want my grandchildren and my children living that close to something like that with increasing crime, because you know how kids are when they get in the neighborhood. They're gonna be stealing out of people's cars and thieving other people's houses. That's just how it is. You're gonna have all that traffic speeding up that Macedonia Road where we all live and we have children. And I just think I'm upset that something like that could possibly end up in rural Bullock County. We are 15, what is it, about 13 to 15 miles out in the county. I don't want to have to go to Scrivian, sell my property and go to Scrivian County or someplace so that I can still remain in the country. And that's my objection. I don't care what he puts there, nothing is gonna make me happy, unless it's like 10 acre tracts where someone can have a mini farm and horses and cows and things that are what we have all around the place and down that road anyway, then that'd be fine. But that is a monster of a subdivision that far out in rural Bullock County, and that's my issue. If that happens, y'all are setting a precedent for other people to buy other farmland or other land on Macedonia Road and doing the same thing.
Mr. Bell, you have three minutes and 40 seconds if you'd care to speak.
Yes, thank you. I will address a couple of the comments. I apologize that I didn't speak to Ms. English. She said I should pull up in her yard, but it's exactly because of what you heard from Ms. McLean that I didn't just pull up in anybody's yard. I tried calling a couple of folks and I probably should have called more. I was hoping the ones I called would, you know, help put me in touch with other people, and some did and some didn't. So, but we're here tonight. You know, and Ms. McLean, she said nothing's gonna make her happy. I mean, it's, you know, whatever we do, it's, she will not be happy regardless. One thing I keep hearing people say is about that there are plenty of houses in this community, and it's just not true. The City of Statesboro has approved a substantial number of multifamily units, but there's still a severe shortage of traditional detached, single-family homes in Bullock County. And all the units that have been approved and even are construction, a lot of, around the Statesboro are predominantly rental homes consisting of cluster homes, townhouses, duplexes, triplexes, et cetera. And this is a higher density develop, most of which is for rent, not for sale. I actually looked online today and there are 115 homes of all types under 350,000 in Bullock County. Of that, 87 are actually traditional site-built homes. If you look in 2023, we had 100, sorry, had 1,000 home sales of all types. We're sitting on about 879 this year. Right now, we have about a month and a half of inventory, which is extremely low. A healthy market would be three to four months of inventory. Six months would actually be considered a neutral market where buyers and sellers can negotiate reasonably. Essentially, to meet that, it would take about 1,000 houses to satisfy the existing demand to be built right now. We just don't have enough houses. And one of the reasons is because there were previously low mortgage rates, so you have people that may want to sell their home, but if they have a 2.5% mortgage rate and they're gonna go to a 6.5%, they're just not willing to make that move. If you look actually back in 2021, we had 1,636 home sales, and that was, again, before rates spiked. rates spiked. So, out of those 87 homes I was telling you about, 50 of them are basically around the city limits of Statesboro or within a mile or so with the bypass. The balance is around Brooklet, on the way to Brooklet, off Highway 67, the little Leefield subdivision when you're going off, 80 towards Leefield. And then you have a few isolated outliers, but there is a shortage of houses. If you look out 301 north, off to the right, going towards 24, kind of that corridor in between, there's really nothing for sale, a couple of houses. You know, essentially, if you look at Bullock County, kind of almost as a dartboard, Statesboro is the bullseye in the center, and that's where most of the housing is around. But we have people that want to live in areas other than in the city or on the fringe of the city limits, and they want to live in the county, and our goal is to try to provide housing to those folks. You know, I've listened to a lot of things tonight from people, and the common theme from the neighbors is we don't want development, but we're just trying to accommodate the needs of those people that are coming to the county. They're coming here to work and we've got to provide housing for them. So, I thank you very much for your time.
May I rebut something that you said since I am the one that we spoke of? I got one, I can do it in one minute. Sorry.
About 30 seconds.
Okay. Will you allow me to do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Sir, my original comment to Mr. Bell was not meant as disrespect, is the reason I said that I felt left out, I'm just being a nice neighbor. I asked, you can get my number even though it's private. He's a realtor. He could come up in my yard and we could have discussed it. But the reason that I'm bringing it up now, because you're about to make a decision on our livelihood, what we have worked for, I have been there 35 years. Some of these are generational families. And eventually, if you let this go through, I am going to be affected because I am on the dirt road and he says there's nothing going to be facing it. But the thing is, is that I'm going to eventually be because I'm the only one on that side. Thank you, sir.
Do any of the commissioners have any discussion or questions for the speakers? The chair would entertain a motion at this time. Mr. Akins, we've got to vote it up or down, do we not?
You do. Somebody's got to make a motion, and you've got to have a motion passed before you --
Mr. Vice Chairman, we do need the houses, but we also heard from the constituents, so I, my motion is to not deny.
We have a motion to deny. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? If none, all in favor of the motion to deny, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion to deny is carried. Before we get to the next item, if any of y'all would like to leave, we appreciate you coming.
Do what you need to do, Tom. Before you leave, before you leave from there, you need to get to, you know, I mean, to explain the difference between the committee and the board of commissioners.
Item number eight, Blue Water Bullock, LLLC, has applied to rezone 38.5 acres from Ag 5 agricultural five acres to R3 multiple-family residential, minimum lot size, 15,000 square feet, to develop a townhouse subdivision. This property is located at 285 Herman Rushing Road. Mr. Pope.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Before I get started, Mr. Akins, I did get an email this afternoon asking for a deferral, but do I need to go through the introduction of the case, or should I just turn it over to applicant to make that request, or?
Yeah, I would go through the introduction just to
Okay.
make them aware of what it is, but they'll have to approve the deferral, obviously.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, this rezone request involves 38.54 acres. The general location is south of Statesboro. Herman Rushing Road is a local county road which accesses onto Burke Alter Road, shown here. This is a parcel with area zoning. The Chatham Place subdivision is just to the south of the property. On the other side of, the opposite side of Herman Rushing Road, City of Statesboro has recently annexed that parcel there that says S R2. And the development there is a similar, a similar proposed townhome subdivision, and I believe some single-family homes as well. But again, this, this section of Burke Alter has various zoning with the City of Statesboro, again, having annexed in the adjacent property. This is an aerial photo of the property. And this is the proposed site plan for the property. And that's Herman Rushing Road, looking into the property. And that, that's the parcel that City of Statesboro has annexed.
I think in this case, Mr. Pope, the tabling fee would apply if the commissioners approved, right?
That's correct. All right, so with that, I'll turn it over. Well, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Staff recommends conditions if approved, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends a denial by 3 to 1 vote. So, I was pointing at Hayden, but it's Mr. Steve Rushing.
It's been a long week, Mr. Vice Chairman, commissioners. Let me explain the reason for the motion and the timing of the request. Blue Water Bullock also was before you last night with an application that also anticipated city water and sewer being run to it. Mr. Couch and Mr. Mosley raised some issues about that last night. So, we kind of got busy, my folks, today trying to get some of that information from the City of Statesboro, and by late in the day, they could not get those answers that we anticipated that you were seeking even last night. That's why it got so late in the day. We tried to get those answers before. We feel we need to continue to work with the city and the county to get that worked out on the water and sewer, and we think another, a single deferral hopefully would get that, allow us to get that done. I hate it for those folks that, that showed up tonight, but that is where we find ourselves. We, we wish it to be tabled like we was doing last night for the same reason. Thank you.
Commissioner, may I ask to come up and speak?
Mr. Joel Martin?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Joel Martin did sign up in opposition.
Yeah, and you, you can allow whoever signed up to speak and still move to defer it if you want to.
Figured I've waited this long, I might as well get something to say, right? First of all, thank y'all for doing the job you do. It's a hard job. I've been, worked, I've worked with the government, worked with Department of Labor here for many years, and served on many committees with the county, the city, Southern and the Board of Education. My, my concern, I have no problem with deferring, but I've got a concern, and that's annexation. I know the city has annexed a big portion over next to Herman Rushing Road, and we tried to oppose that, but you know what? The city's answers to a lot of questions was, oh, that's another person's problem. That's DOT's problem. Oh, that's the school board's problem. Well, my problem is, I don't want that piece of property to be annexed next to my backyard from the city. I didn't move here to be in a city. I don't know what the, it blows my mind that city can just come in and annex. I don't know who has the authority over that. I just, my, my concern is annexation for that piece of property. Now, we could get into the reasons I'm opposing it, but I, my concerns to you as commissioners is I'm a county citizen and I don't want to be a city citizen. And I know they say, well, you know, you're already established. I don't want the city limits at my backyard. So, that's my consideration. I ask you for my consideration there. I can go into the rest of it and it'll blow your mind.
Thank you.
Yeah, because my, my, I will, it was told on. Now, I got myself, myself going now, just give me a minute. My, my thing is, the traffic, do you know, right now, between the city and the county, if this is approved, that's 978 residential units within a half mile around at 67 and Burke Alter. Now, do you put the horse before the cart or the cart before the horse?
Attorney Akins.
Well, I guess you could, you need to decide whether you want to defer it or not. I mean, I think that sounded like a reasonable reason to defer it. And that would be deferred, I guess, to the December 3 meeting, right, James?
Yes, I believe so, but also in fairness to the previous, the other applicant from tonight, I feel like I do need to mention that this one would also require variance because it's, you know, Herman Rushing Road is a local road, so, you know, again, in all fairness.
Mr. Rushing, you have time left on the clock if you'd like to.
Certainly, we would like to address some of the things that Joel Martin indicated, but I think it would be better if we did that at the December 3 meeting, if we would be allowed to do that. We'll have the additional answers that Mr. Mosley and Mr. Couch brought up last night. Thank you.
Any questions or discussion from the commissioners? You have time left if you want to come back and speak.
I'd be encouraged, but, and I said wait till December 3, I still may, but I just want to let you know. I worked with a lot of different committees up in Atlanta when I lived in Atlanta, and I saw where the infrastructure was not as important as getting building done. And I saw what it caused. And the infrastructure has to be in place if you're going to control growth, but not pack it on, like I said. 973 residential units, and that's not including a full subdivision that is right across the street from one of them, that holds 130 houses already built. We're, we've got to take it as, not on assistance, but as you as commissioners, that we have to put, we've got to do control growth and see what the infrastructure is. You have that much growth in one little half-mile area, and 67 and Burke Alter Road wasn't built for that. At 67 and Burke Alter Road, you don't have a left turn, you don't, you know, and a right turn. There, you have it already backed up. The other day, it was backed all the way up to Kiwanah Road. It's not every day, but it is. It's also a thoroughfare for people coming from 80 to 80. But my thing is, we just need to have infrastructure. You're talking about 970, how many police are going to need? Tell me. How many emergency workers are going to be needed? But if we don't have those answers first, in the school system, Sally Z. You know, if we don't have that, those answers first, and you build, then it puts everything in a, in a real problem. I just need, you know, what I'm just saying is, please, what you need to do as commissioners, not just for me, but for others, is let's make sure we have our infrastructure. I heard today, four or five times, what's it going to do with our impact on emergency needs, the school needs, and other things that will be impacted with that many people? I mean, seriously? And these, and you've got established neighborhoods already there.
Well, Mr. Martin, if I could just briefly address your concerns.
Yes.
As briefly as I can. And I don't know if this application would lead to just water and sewer service to this particular site or result in annexation, but, I mean, I go on the record saying City of Statesboro is very notorious for annexation strategies around the fringe of Statesboro, where developments are approved basically on county roads, and it then becomes, because of state annexation laws, the county's responsibility to pay for the infrastructure. Now, alternatively, sometimes we're accused of not requiring developers to put in proper infrastructure, even though Mr. Bell had a tough night tonight.
Well, I live in his, I live in his subdivision.
Yeah, but he was required to pave Herman Rushing Road to get Chatham Place originally, right? You know, and he did so willingly. But, you know, what's happened at Burke Alter and 67, if you look at the, if you look at the progression of annexation maps, and we've even had an agreement with the City of Statesboro that they largely don't follow when it comes to developing that area around Kiwanah and the Greenway. So, that's just the difficulty, I, I think, of not being able to get them to engage in the right kind of conversations about infrastructure. But, yeah, that's, it's a legitimate concern.
So, county commissioners have no, no say-so in it?
It depends. I mean, they can raise an annexation objection, but the, the annexation laws where even you can file an objection are very, I don't want to say biased, slanted toward municipalities. And that, and it usually revolves around roads, less so water and sewer and things like that. So, it's, it's a tough situation, but I merely wanted to illustrate by, by example how it works and how difficult it is to negotiate around the fringes of town. You might recall the Beasley Road incident
Oh, yeah.
last year.
Real, real familiar with that.
Yeah, that, that, that makes it tough.
Yeah.
It really does.
I just, like, like I said, citizens move in an area because that's where they want to live.
Yeah.
And when you start seeing encroachment from the city, then, then it seems like my, my difficult, I'm hard-headed sometimes, but it just, I know it's state law. I understand state law. I work with the certification of state law, but that just seems backwards.
A lot of great respect that I've had for you over the A lot of great respect that I've had for you over the years. I just wanted to give a little more insight, and you may have already known it, but I hope it was helpful.
Well, I appreciate you doing that, because I had no idea, really and truly. So, I know how hard it is, what y'all do, and it's thankless, but I appreciate what you just did and y'all did for me right there. So, God bless you, my friends. God bless you.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion by the commissioners or any questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion at this time.
I think a motion to defer.
Second.
Motion two.
He made the motion to defer, I second.
I didn't understand your motion.
Defer.
Defer.
And you second this. We have a motion to defer and a second. Any discussion at this time? All in favor of the motion to defer, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion to defer has carried. All right, we're fixing to go into public comments. If anyone would like to leave, please do so. Public comments. At this time, I will recognize those citizens who have signed up to address the board. Once your name is called, come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record, and make your comments. All speakers who are recognized will be allotted five minutes.
Patricia Hunter. Jane Sack.
Well, I tell you what, I'm going to defer until Mr. Thompson returns, but I wanted to piggyback on something that Mr. Couch said with his accolades for the Recreation Department. The gentleman that was sitting here and his wife, 42 years ago, they moved to Statesboro, and he started the game of soccer. This town had never heard of soccer. My three boys played soccer for a number of years, but I just wanted to recognize him. He just now got up.
Thank you.
David Reed.
I'm David Reed, 8098 Highway, Georgia 46. The problem I got is, all this rain we having every year, it's getting higher and higher, you know, from the creek, Lars Creek's, because half of Statesboro runs through it. Then you've got the city water and the county waters. It's just too much building and ain't no detention ponds. You know, ain't nobody worrying about no storm runoff. You know, I find the city and the county needs to get together and look at this problem. You know, I notice every time it comes a good rain, it's getting higher and higher up there. You notice that, Timmy? The water table? I mean, the county and the city needs to do something. All this buildings, you know, start taking asphalt and concrete, putting down, it's, won't take the water. And I find the county and the city needs to get together. It's this growth, you know, tax money. You know, the city's going crazy over tax money in the county, you know, about building. They need to look at the people that's been out there. I've been out there 32 years. I've never seen it higher. Last hurricane, the first hurricane this year, it's got higher, and this, this rain today is high. I've got a pond, never ran over it before. It ran over it two times this year. And all the water's coming from the city and the county. Because when somebody builds something, commercial, a residential subdivision, they ought to be able to detention pond for the storm, or a big enough pond to hold a couple inches of rain, two or three inches, then you can pump it back in to the system. Because there's a good many problems around the county because of that. But I find the city and the county needs, going to have to do something pretty quick. And the cities ain't making no better. And that's all I got to say. But you reckon y'all can check into that?
Thank you.
You reckon?
Yes, we'll look at it.
Look at it?
Lisa Neville.
Good evening, commissioners. I was sick last night, so I gave y'all a break. But I'm feeling better today. I wanted to remind you of something. A few months ago, I stood up here and told y'all that we had put all of our eggs in that Hyundai basket, and that things could change depending on that presidential election. Things changed. So, I don't know whether I'm being a, can't decide whether I'm being a not-nice person to say thank y'all for everything that y'all did, or what. But Bernie Moreno, the Ohio senator that just got elected, Tuesday night, I watched his acceptance speech. Not sure if y'all, any of y'all saw it. I mean, I was just watching the election and happened to catch it. But anyway, he said about all the things that we were going to do for energy in the United States, and he said that come January, the EV mandates were gone. So, I'm not saying Hyundai's going to shut it down. Make my life happy if they did, but don't say I didn't tell you so. I've been accused of saying a lot of things up here that I did not know what I was talking about, but I can promise you that when I stand at this podium, I know what I'm talking about. I don't just make stuff up. There's only been one time that I have misspoken, and that was at a Board of Education meeting. It wasn't even here. When I told y'all that there weren't all these jobs coming and everything, I was accused of reading stuff in the newspaper, making up stuff, whatever. So, you've got people in here tonight, and I do appreciate the ones that got turned down tonight. But we've still got people in here thinking they're going to make a fortune off of Bullock County by developing it. And that's all it's about. That, you know, and I'm sad that a couple of them left because I really wanted them to hear what I had to say. Because they're not trying to make, they're not, y'all don't believe these lies about we're trying to look out for people? We don't need any more houses. Here we go, Mr. Pope. Mr. Pope said, and I've already talked to him, and he knows that I'm going to say this, so I am not, once again, I know what I'm talking about, that the county has reduced the projected growth of Bullock County by half, and that the housing units in the pipeline for Statesboro and Bullock County, which would be part of Brooklyn and those you approve down there at Nebels, that they're going to meet the demand. So, they're going to meet the demand. We approved 240 more tonight, and these other people want it even more. And Mr. Bell has the nerve to sit here and say that we have a housing shortage? When our own people know that we don't? I guess it doesn't even do me any good to ask about schools again, to worry about where, where we're going to put everybody, where we're going to put these kids. Honest to God, I don't, I don't know where y'all get some of these ideas from. I'm, I'm not going to make any accusations because I'm just aggravated. But you have got to start thinking about Bullock County. Start thinking about the people that live here. I take that back. I did make one mistake. I told y'all before the elections that we were all going to still be here afterwards, and, well, we're not. So, that was my other mistake I made. But I didn't know that Mr. Kirk was going to move. And I did not know Mr. Couch was going to move. So, I did make a mistake there. But the rest of us are here, and as far as I know, we're all staying here. We've got to look out for these people. I do appreciate y'all taking the time and asking the questions and doing the research that you do. But we've got to be truthful, too, because Mr. Pope is not going to lie. He is not going to lie. Thank you.
Do we have any comments? Do we have any comments from any of the commissioners or staff?
Good evening, commissioners. Thank y'all for the opportunity. I spoke with a couple of you ahead of time, and you asked for an update on some of the issues that we're facing in public works and in the county in general. The storm today hit us pretty hard, and I just wanted to give you an update on where we were at. As of this evening, we have approximately 40 roads that are closed completely. We responded to 65 roads with water over the road today in, in our work process. There was also some rescues done today. I'll let the fire chief, because the fire chief and the sheriff's departments were the ones that managed that.
Mr. Tapley.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, just talking about Bullock County. Well, obviously, Statesboro had a few. The Bullock County Sheriff's Department responded to all of them. Bullock County Fire Department responded to four. We had one this morning where we had to use our F-250 with our battalion chief to go in. EMS couldn't get in there. Our firefighters had to walk in there through a little bit of running water. Battalion chief drove down in there, got them out, got them to EMS. We had another one where we couldn't get to at all in Sinkhole, so we had to call for a boat from the Sheriff's Department to come out there and get those. And while that was happening, we had to respond to another one on Sam Tillman. A male and some children were trapped in a house with water running in it. So, again, our battalion chief drove his 250 down there, grabbed them up, and then got them back out to the, to the little convenience store there at Sinkhole and 46. And then, of course, had one more cozy corner. We had an elderly couple call and say that now they had water running through the first floor. He was disabled in a hospital bed, and so we moved the hospital bed upstairs. She wished just to stay in the home. So, we moved the hospital bed upstairs, moved him upstairs, and, and got, got him to safety. So, just a little bit about what we did, and that was done with the Sheriff's Department. They did a bunch, and Statesboro Fire also ran some calls, so.
Thank you, Ben. We all, as a team, Bullock County Public Works, Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, EMS, have worked exceptionally well together over the last few months, and over the last few years in general, to, to serve the citizens of Bullock County. One thing I want to note, in that four water rescues and some other issues, they have relocated several families to mobile, to motels overnight to give them a place to stay. There was some consideration for opening a shelter this evening. I don't know whether they've done that or not because of some of the people that were displaced. One of the big things is, we need to ask people, is if it's not necessary, stay off the roads. It's, 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 we don't know what some of our dirt roads are right now. We've not been able to evaluate all of our dirt road system. And we've communicated that to the Board of Education and actually made recommendation that they maybe not use their dirt road system tomorrow morning, because we don't know what's there. They sent us a list this morning of the things that they had noted, but that was before some of the major impacts came. I will tell you that, just a little bit more information, the storm debris gathering has slowed down. Florida made an exception to add money to what FEMA was paying. A lot of the people left here and went to Florida to collect debris. We went from 15 trucks collecting debris on, on the Helene storm to five. The water issues that we face today were compounded by some of that debris laying in the right-ofways and causing water to divert to somewhere where it didn't need to go and go across the road in some areas. So, I say all of that to say, I don't believe we'll make our 90-day plan to be fully picked up on debris by 90 days. You told me that to start with. But I would rather tell people up front that we're not going to make that, and if we do, we'll be more than happy. But if we don't, at least we don't get bombarded by the negativities of we didn't accomplish what we had projected. There's reasons why we, we won't be able to do that, and that's because of the fact that we lost a lot of subcontractors to Florida. I will give you a little bit of positive information from Adalia. This past week, we signed off on two obligations from the Adalia storm, which was over a year ago. One of the obligations was for grading the dirt roads at about $580,000, I think. They approved that one, obligated that one at the $580,000. FEMA will contribute 75% of that, and, and GMA will contribute 10% of that. So, we can look for 85% of that $580,000, and that is complete. It only has to go through review for GMA to, for us, for that check to be sent to us. We were also approved and obligated for $4.7 million in drainage improvements from Adalia storm, which we had projected at 4.5 a year ago. We got into some discussions with them, and we, we showed, we'd spent 1.7 on 36%. They come back and offered us $4.7 million to complete that project. We're going to go into some more negotiations with them November 25th. We have a scoping meeting with them for Storm Deborah and Helene, and we'll define a little bit more about where these storms break and where the money is going to or come from after that. But I just wanted to kind of bring y'all up to date. Y'all have any questions, anything?
I just have one. Since Florida put out a bounty, what's the likelihood when we, or when y'all meet with FEMA about trying to get an extension on the 90 days? I mean, I don't know what they're doing in the Carolinas and other places. I haven't heard bounties there, but it seems like they ought to show the other states some grace in their regard.
Florida actually got 180 days at 100% gathering. South Carolina got 180 days, and I believe North Carolina and Tennessee got 180 days. And I don't know why Georgia has not got the 180-day grace period for 100% recovery. I don't know if our governor is pushing for that. We do know that FEMA and GMA representatives are aware of it, and I would suspect that they are trying to push to get that done, to get that extend, to get our 90-day extension out to 180 days. If it does, that's a big plus for us, because I feel sure we can finish the debris in 180 days. But 90 days is going to really try us to, to be able to recoup 100%.
Well, and we're going to get in the winter season, too.
And we are, absolutely. And with the limited trucks, we went from 15 trucks before Florida done what they done, down to five. So, we're running five trucks. We're at about 15%, I think, is our collection point at this point for what we have collected, and then that's what we've collected out of the centers in-house and what the contractors have collected. We've only gathered 15% of our, our volume at this point. So, and we're right at 40 days in. So, there's no way we'll finish it in 90 days. And I just wanted to put that out there, so the public knows that, ahead of time, that we're not going to finish this in 90 days, as far as debris gathering. And we'll be back out at daylight in the morning, trying to evaluate our dirt road systems and figure out to what extent we're damaged. I did give Corey a figure tonight. He had to have a figure to turn into GMA so that they can turn into FEMA of what Georgia's disaster is from this rainstorm. I throwed him $5 million. We had between six and seven on Adalia. I think we went to 11 on Debbie. But I throwed him $5 million on this storm that we had last night. And I think that was fairly reasonable compared to what we've seen in the past. So, y'all have any questions? Anybody?
Did we ask in front of the board?
Feel free. I'm, I'm good.
Did we not have a contract with the debris cleanup company?
We have a contract with SDR, which is the managing company. They had so- They had subcontractors under them that were here to pick up the debris. The subcontractors are the ones that left.
Okay, so there's no...
And there's no timeframe on that contract. It's just that we hired them to do it. We projected that we would get it done in ninety days.
So was Bullock County taking that risk of not getting the FEMA money by not having a timetable?
You don't, if we get, what we get gathered in ninety days, we get a hundred percent. If it goes over ninety days, the percentage is cut back to seventy-five percent, and then it'll be a matter of how much does Georgia, GMA, put into it. Generally, that's somewhere between ten and fifteen percent. So, worst-case scenario, we may be out fifteen percent to gather the remainder after ninety days, if we don't get the extension to a hundred-and-eighty.
So there were no liquidated damages or anything in the contract?
No, sir.
Wow.
And, and that comes back to this is the first time we've ever had to deal with outside contract services to handle any kind of storm recoveries. We're in the same boat the City of Statesboro is, other than the fact that theirs were a little bit smaller project than ours. They're about seventy-five percent complete. Once they complete, their trucks will go to the county, and, and it'll increase our, our collection process by doing that. Have we learned some things? Absolutely. My dad always told me, if there's a day wasted if you don't learn something that day, and we've learned some stuff.
It's, it's my understanding from county staff that the contractor did not bring enough trucks to begin with.
Generally, what they do, what contractors do that come in and negotiate to get the contract to gather the debris, is that they, they work out the contract to get that debris gathered, and then they sub with trucks from all over the country. And we've had two trucks come in last weekend that got recertified, so I think we're up to five trucks now. We were down to as many as three. We're up to five. They're telling us that some of the trucks are coming back from Florida, because it's getting so congested down there that they can't make the money that they thought they could, and that they're migrating back this way. It's probably still gonna take us another few weeks to get anything back up to considerable numbers to be able to manage this, but that's kind of where we're at right now. And, and City, City was in this same meeting Tuesday, I guess. They had the same discussions Tuesday with these contractors. They're in the same boat. And you, could you cancel the contract? I, I feel sure we can, but there's nobody else out there to do it. Everybody's already obligated.
We're talking about about a half million dollars, correct?
On gathering?
No, I'm talking about if we have to pay fifteen percent.
Um, yeah, I don't, right off the top of my head, I haven't put those numbers together, because it's based on cubic yards and how many's coming in, and then how many you actually tub grind and carry away, and, and all of the costs that are associated with that. If the contractor does it, then if it doesn't get covered at the hundred percent, then the fifteen percent would be ours. I've, I've not run those numbers totally. I would guess fifteen percent of that would probably be, yeah, we're probably somewhere between five-hundred thousand dollars. You know, just off the top of my head, I would say that would be a close estimate if we end up going over ninety days and have to get involved in fifteen percent. Yes. But we'll have funding coming in on the other side, and like I said, we still got funding coming back from Adalia. So, I mean, all of that's just kind of a moving target.
How many trucks does Statesboro have?
Excuse me?
How many trucks does Statesboro have?
I don't know how many trucks Statesboro has running in the City of Statesboro. I know that they're at about seventy-five percent. That was the last number I had on their gathering. They had fifty thousand cubic yards, and they're at about seventy-five percent. We had two-hundred-and-fifty thousand was the estimate, and we're at about fifteen So, their trucks will move to the county when they finish the city, but they've probably got another couple of weeks to, to do that. They'll finish there as well within the ninety days, and then those trucks will migrate out. Hopefully, Georgia gets the declaration to the hundred-and-eighty days, and that would, that would take care of any of these issues. And I know the governor's probably getting pushed to, to make that, and I'm sure we may could even make some contact with our delegation to try to push that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Anybody else?
Thank you for your, your report. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
We appreciate what you do. I know you had a difficult job. You had your phone on today. I called Dick and told him that when I found out I had a chair at this meeting, I asked him, could he come fix my road where I couldn't get out?
I told him only if I could stay with him when I got there.
At this time, I need a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing potential litigation and real estate according to... Tell them what that is.
According to OCGA fifty-dash-fourteen-dash-three B-1B and OCGA fifty-dash-fourteen-dash-two.
Do we have a motion?
No movement.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. We appreciate y'all coming tonight. We got to clear the room for executive session.